The resolution before us in support of what I believe to be an extremely important piece of legislation that will hopefully save thousands of lives across California and will set the tone across the nation. AB 392 authored by our own Assembly Member Dr. Shirley Weber will not only set the standard for use of deadly force by law enforcement, but will also ensure that all officers receive the guidance and training they need to safely avoid the use of deadly force so that both officers and members of the community are not unnecessarily killed. Under current law, which has not been updated since 1872, police can use deadly force whenever an objectively reasonable officer would have done so under the same circumstances, regardless of whether deadly force was necessary to prevent death or serious bodily injury, whether there were available alternatives, and even if the officer's criminal negligence led to those circumstances. While use of force when necessary seems like a common sense standard, it isn't the current practice in California. This bill reflects policies that policing experts recognize as effective at better preserving life while also allowing officers the latitude needed to ensure public safety. Under President Obama, the U.S. Department of Justice helped many cities adopt similar policies, including San Francisco and Seattle. Seattle's federal monitor determined that the policy change resulted in a marked reduction in serious use of force without compromising the safety of officers. The state legislature must pass AB 392 to raise California's standard for police use of force and bring it in line with national best practices. When police tactics to -- when police use tactics to slow down situations and de-escalate tensions, it saves community lives and also increases safety for officers. And before I turn back to the Council President, I would like to make a point of clarification in the language on the resolution, and we'll get to that later as well. The resolution should read, "Whereas according to the California Department of Justice in 2017, the last full year for which statistics are available, use of force by California police officers led to the deaths of 172 people, half of whom did not have a firearm." Currently, it says were unarmed, and that is not entirely accurate. So, we want to be fair in this process. We want to be accurate in this process, and definitely everything that we put in the resolution is a part of that. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you for that introduction. We will now hear a statement from Police Chief Nussleit.
Can I have 10 minutes, please? Can everybody hear me?
Stay close.
How about now? All right. I'll try to make certain that everybody's doing this. So, last year, FBI named San Diego the nation's largest, safest, largest city. It was a tremendous achievement, and it could not have been accomplished without the exceptional contributions made by the men and women of the San Diego Police Department, as well as the broad support we received throughout our communities. Despite this success, I know there are members of the community that don't feel safe within our city. More disturbing to me is when some citizens express their distress, anger, and fear resulting from their real or perceived experience with members of the San Diego Police Department. I have always felt that people fear each other until they take the opportunity to speak with one another. Unfortunately, community distrust in law enforcement seems to be growing not from an inability to communicate, but rather through a seismic shift in how and when we communicate. Today, opinions and narratives of persons and topics are shaped by controversial images and inaccurate statements spread instantaneous by social media and, in some cases, mainstream media, even as critical incidents are unfolding. This type of communication, when it's hard to determine fact from fiction, makes it difficult to build strong community partnerships. These difficulties must be overcome since successful policing requires trusting relationships with police and the citizens. I have found the best way to create these needed relationships starts with never dismissing anyone's negative experiences with our department. Next, our connection to the community grows by taking concerns, continually revisiting our operating procedures, and determining how we use evidence and experience to effect needed changes. Providing proper guidance and establishing clear expectations to our officers leads to enhanced community trust and faith in our department. As Chief of Police, this is the exact process I recently enacted when I had the department's procedures related to the use of force and crowded restraint updated. Those changes include a focus on de-escalation tactics and requiring a duty to intervene if officers believe the force utilizing it in an incident appears unreasonable. This is another step in the right direction towards building stronger relationships. The resolution before City Council related to AB 392 also seeks to support enhanced relationships between citizens and the police. While well intentioned, this bill suffers from a number of flaws and is being bolstered by factually incorrect data that is perpetuating myths about police uses of force in California. These inaccuracies are divisive and have found their way into this resolution. Specifically, the resolution states, "In 2017, the last full year for which statistics are available, use of force by California police officers led to the deaths of 172 people, half of whom were unarmed." And thank you, Council President -- or Council Montgomery for changing that. And then, the resolution provides a link where the reader can supposedly verify this information. While there were 172 fatal law enforcement encounters in 2017, it is inaccurate to claim half of them involved citizens that were unarmed. In reality, half were armed with firearms, but well over 90% of these fatal encounters involve citizens who were armed with other deadly weapons like knives or perceived deadly weapons like replica firearms. Additionally, the link found in the resolution provides the reader with data that does not support this resolution. There are other flaws, such as the reference to 196 of the Penal Code, which was written in 1872. The scope and justification code was significantly narrowed in application by the State California Supreme Court in People versus Sobalos in 1974 and effectively replaced in 1989 by the U.S. Supreme Court decision Graham versus Connor. 196 Penal Code should be updated to reflect the court's decision in this case, but is also inaccurate to infer the force standard has not changed for 147 years, as do many people when using the language expressed in this resolution. As I mentioned earlier, listening to community voices is an essential part of the change process. So is relying upon evidence, not emotion, when implementing new policies. If the council voted on the resolution as written, it would be acting on information that has been disproved and supporting a false narrative that has eroded community trust in police. Beyond the resolution, supporting AB 392 in its evolving form is premature and sends an inappropriate message. This bill was recently merged with SB 230 in the hopes that a compromise could be reached that both the law enforcement and the community could support. While flawed particularly in regards to ambiguous definitions, with continued efforts, AB 392 may still become a bill that provides updated guidance to law enforcement officers and their use of force. Force standards are frequently discussed, but not always understood. The reasonable or objectively reasonable standard that was created by the U.S. Supreme Court in Graham versus Connor established that an officer's use of force should be judged from the perspective of a reasonable officer on the scene and not with the benefit of hindsight. This standard accepts the reality that officers must make the best call they can with the information available to them at a critical time, and sometimes factors like human limitations -- excuse me, like human limitations in processing information will cause them to make the decision that turns out to be wrong. When this happens, the officers are not held criminally liable if their actions were determined to be objectively reasonable. AB 392 would introduce a necessary standard into California law. Essentially, the standard rejects the unanimous decision by the U.S. Supreme Court in Graham versus Connor and makes officers criminally liable should they reasonably but mistakenly perceive a threat to their lives and utilize deadly force. Those in favor of 392 like to claim the necessary standard is already in place and shown to be working well in police departments like San Francisco and Seattle. This is another inaccuracy. The necessary standard was added to these departments' use of force procedures. Should officers utilize force that is deemed unnecessary, they can suffer administrative consequences, such as being fired, but may not necessarily be criminally charged. Arguments can be made that requiring the necessary standard for use of force in department procedures throughout California would substantially raise expectations of police officers while placing limitations on new legal consequences for them. Opponents claim this is asking for perfection from officers who operate in a very imperfect environment. I hope this debate is happening between our legislators and is one that needs to be more broadly discussed with law enforcement leaders. As it stands, AB 392 is primarily written under the mistaken belief that fear of criminal prosecution is sufficient to alter fatal encounters between law enforcement and citizens. As a 30-year law enforcement professional who has investigated fatal use of force, it's training that creates the possible -- the best possible outcomes, not fear of prosecution. In closing, Sunday, I was in Washington, D.C., where five San Diego police officers were given the prestigious Top Cop Award for their heroic actions in a lethal encounter with a suspect armed with an assault rifle that shot two San Diego police officers on June 23rd of 2018. I was very proud of their courage they displayed and also relieved their names will not be among the 33 San Diego Police Department officers and 21,000 law enforcement officers nationwide who will be remembered tomorrow during Peace Officer Memorial Day. As the Chief of Police, you can expect I will work tirelessly to make safeguarding lives the highest priority of our department so the names of officers and citizens involved in fatal encounters does not grow as it has in the past. However, I cannot support a flawed resolution or build bills such as 392 in its current form. Council should withhold judgment on AB 392 as well as any resolution in support of it until an opportunity exists to view the completed bill and determine whether you actually support the final language. Doing anything less undermines the legislative process, gives your support to an unseen, unfinished product, and creates the possibility that the AB 392 resolution you support today in San Diego is not the same bill that is ultimately voted on in Sacramento. Council should send a message that encourages state legislators to push past their differences and make an effort on AB 392 worthy of our city's united support. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear a statement from Assembly Member Shirley Weber.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the invitation and opportunity to present AB 392. The title of the bill is fairly clear. It's a California Act to Save Lives, and I'm grateful that the City Council is considering a resolution today in support of this policy as others have done. AB 392 would change California's legal standard for when police officers use deadly force to align with policing best practices that we know work to keep both officers and public safe. As I begin this presentation, I was in an interview this morning, and the question from the person was, you know, "How did this come about? You know, why are you doing this? What is this all about?" And I had to say to him, you know, "For the last few years, we've seen a lot of things happening that have made us very sad in terms of people being shot who were unarmed, communities feeling they're unsafe because of that." And we've seen that happen time and time again. And as I pointed out to him, people often ask, "Why did this take place? And why couldn't there have been something else done?" And what they're basically saying is, "This isn't the use of lethal force should be the last thing that you do." When I was asked to consider this bill, because most of you know I'm an educator, and my focus has been on education and young people and trying to create equal opportunity and access, but since I've been in Sacramento, I've also become known as the person who deals with a lot of social justice issues, because I recognize that even if I'm educating young people to the highest level, if they are unsafe, if they're killed before their time, then we wonder whether or not we should have done something else or done some other things at the same time. And so, when I decided to think about this bill, I actually went to my church, and I said, "This is what I'm considering, and I don't know if I'm gonna do it, because it's gonna be really hard, and I'll be vilified, talked about, you know, pictures put on posters. Should I do this?" And I told them what it was about. I said, "So pray for me as I think about this." And it was interesting to me that to a person, almost every last one of them, this is a pretty good-sized church, who came to me and said, "I hope you do this. I'm gonna pray that you take this challenge." And I thought that was interesting, but then I realized that most of them, like myself, have lived in this country their entire life with the feeling that they were always not given the full justice, that they were not allowed to participate in everything there was to participate in society, and that they had seen and said to their sons and their daughters sometimes that they were not going to get a fair shake too often and that they had to be extraordinary individuals, second-class citizens, as some would call, that when they are faced with law enforcement, that they have to be very careful, very conscious, move very slowly, make sure that they know what's going on, and then still, they may not come home safe. And I was aware of that because of what was told to my brother, to my father, who left Arkansas because the Klan were looking for him, because he was a strong African American who refused to say yes or no to people who disrespected him. And so, he had to leave for his life, and I've heard the story to my brothers, to my -- I've had to say it to my son. And at some point, I said, "I should not have to say it to my grandsons, who are five and seven, and we have to do something to change the narrative," and that's what this is about. I don't hate police. That's what some folks say, "Oh, she must dislike police." I've never been in an encounter with officers that wasn't necessarily a positive encounter. But nonetheless, I realize that I have had friends and others who have had very unpositive encounters. This bill is not an attack on San Diego Police Department. It has to stand on its own record. This is a policy statement for the state of California, and what we plan to do and to hopefully fund a different kind of culture in policing that is so essential for the state of California. I came to California because this is the Golden State, they told me. My father brought us here, hoping that the kinds of issues he faced in Arkansas would never be faced by his children in Los Angeles. And some of that's true, but a lot of it was not. And so, this state deserves better. We have been in a situation where we have shown what we can do with climate change. We've shown what we can do when we're forward-thinking and aggressive. And so, when I read the data and the statistics about the number of individuals shot in California and us being higher than New York and Detroit and some of these other places, I was greatly distressed and concerned about my state called the Golden State of California, that we can and we must do better. AB 392 is a modest proposal, and it's interesting that people have created all kinds of things about it, but it really is a modest proposal. It is an attempt to basically change the definition of when we use lethal force. The power of a police officer to use deadly force is perhaps the most significant responsibility we confer on any public official, and it must be guided by the goal of safeguarding human life. We all agree that police officers must never take a human life unless it is necessary. Current law, however, sanctions police use of deadly force even when officers do not face an imminent threat of life or bodily security, and even when officers have the responsible alternatives at a safer -- to address -- that is safe to address the situation without taking anyone's life. The data has cleared that in 2017, officers killed 172 people, more than half of which did not have a firearm. We've seen the videos of things that have happened that have made us sad as we look at it and realize that someone's lost their son, someone's lost their husband, someone's lost their friend as a result of this. The current standard hits communities of color especially hard. Young black men are 20 times as likely to be killed by police as their white peers. And it was interesting in one of my conversations with one of my colleagues this past week, he was saying to me, you know, and he's not necessarily in favor of the bill, but I don't think he understands the inconsistency of his statement. He said, you know, he was talking about the Stephon Clark situation in Sacramento. He said, "You know, if two white kids were running around jumping fences in backyards and stuff," he said, "we'd say, 'Oh, my God, he's probably doing a prank, a kiddie prank.'" He said, "But if there were two black men jumping in the backyard, we'd say, 'Wonder what did they do? What did they steal? What law have they broken?'" Because our perceptions are so different, and our response, obviously, would be different as well. California's law governing when it justified homicide by officer was passed, as you pointed out, in 1872, and is the oldest, really unchanged statute of its kind in the country. The law regulating police use of force was enacted in 1957 and is the second-oldest unamended use-of-force statute also in the country. AB 392 is fairly simple. It's about preventing unnecessary deaths by clarifying law enforcement's obligation when making the decision to use deadly force. It does not take away deadly force from officers and their ability to use it, but it defines when it should be used. And when we look at whether it's our Attorney General or others, they're saying, "Life is better when you really define the use of lethal force rather than leaving it out there," that it creates fewer opportunities for people to use lethal force, and it makes the community safer. This bill limits the use of deadly force by police officers to those situations where it's necessary to prevent imminent and serious bodily injury or death to the officer or another person. The bill would also require officers to use de-escalation tactics whenever it is possible. When I've talked to individuals, and they say, "Well, couldn't they have done something else?" And you hear that all the time. "Couldn't they have tried this or tried that?" And that's based on a premise that the assumption of most of us is that you only use deadly force when you have to, that if there are other things available to you, other strategies that could be used, you use that, because deadly force oftentimes cannot be pulled back. And when it is done, it is done. And so, we know that that is not something that should be first or second in your arsenal, but it should be in your arsenal of things to do. But it should be done only when you have to do it to save your life, as well as to save someone else's life. The bill is squarely lined and would best practices and standards recognized by academics and experts in the field, including the California Department of Justice, and is modeled after policies that are currently in place at several law enforcement agencies around the country. These standards are shown to reduce serious use of force without having any negative impact on officer safety or public safety. Again, this bill is based on best practices that work. In 2011, after a nine-month investigation of the Seattle Police Department, the Department of Justice Civil Rights Division and the United States Attorney's Office for the Western Division -- District of Washington found that excessive force that violates the U.S. Constitution law, and therefore, Seattle entered into a consent decree, which included requirements to reform its use of force. A three-year study of Seattle's use of force policy, which includes the key elements in AB 392, showed that it resulted in officers using less force with no negative impact on officer safety or public safety. In addition, the California Attorney General recommended changes to Sacramento's police department use of force closely -- that closely tracks with AB 392. San Francisco and Stockton have successfully implemented some reforms to their use of force policies that have reduced use of force incidents while not increasing risk to officers or compromising public safety. That said, only a handful of California cities, and it may be San Diego, have enacted reform to their use of policies, but there are over 500 law enforcement agencies in California. And in my district alone, there are at least a half dozen jurisdictions. So, we need a statewide policy, a standard that we're going to affect the change of culture and conduct of officers to save lives. So, AB 392 saves lives by one, making the sanctity of every life a driving force for policing and the preservation of life a priority in police conduct. It saves lives by limiting the use of deadly force only to circumstances where it is necessary to prevent death or serious bodily injury, by translating the necessary standard into local policies and training for our officers. As mentioned above, where this policy has been implemented, there is a reduction of unnecessary civilian deaths and no increased risk to officers or public safety. But change requires a lot of efforts and strong voices in support. You know, yesterday, I stood at the Capitol with mothers who were in pain over the fact that they lost their sons, their fathers, and husbands for years afterwards. The pain is deep because not only did they lose the individual, they felt there was no justice for them in terms of what they had lost. They were there despite the pain, fighting for change by taking -- talking to lawmakers about the bill and hoping at some point the passage of this bill will prevent the loss to other families. The resolution before you today goes far to support the efforts and mind to make that change. It will strengthen our voice as we work to make California a safer place for all families. Some of you will ask, "Where are we in the process?" This bill will be going to the floor next week. Some will say, "Is it in its final form?" There's always changes that are made in any bill. If anyone who's ever dealt with policy or you've dealt with policy here, there's always some minor changes that will be made. But the bill will continue as to change the standard for policing. It will become a standard of necessary versus a standard of reasonableness. It will have in there some responsibilities in terms of de-escalation of strategies that are there that are necessary. And when I brought this bill before a number of a large group of police officers over a year ago, they said to me, "You know, this is gonna be -- require us to change, to be retrained." And I think they were surprised when I said, "I know that, because I'm not in the business of gotcha. I'm in the business of trying to change people's behavior." And for that reason, the $50 million that is normally the post-budget was increased to 75 by me, because I'm Chair of Public Safety Budget. And so, we increased the budget by $25 million in order to make sure that we began the de-escalation process and the training. This coming year, there will be an additional, I think, $24 million added on to it. So, we will have increased the budget for public safety by almost 75% in the last two years. Why? Because we know that training is going to be essential. We also know that policy is essential, that if you train without policy, you are basically training and you'll lose your focus as to why you're training, because there'll be no accountability for it. But you also, if you demand training and you don't, if you demand a policy change without training, then you basically set people up for failure. So, we are committed to accomplish this. Our President Protam is committed to this. The Speaker of the Assembly is committed to this, and our Governor is committed to this policy. We're all working now with law enforcement to make sure that this policy, if there are any quirks in it that they think may be offensive or difficult to implement, we'll work those things out. But we expect this bill to pass. Your role and your play in making sure that San Diego stands firm for its constituents, that it believes in policy change, and even with a police chief, Chief of Police who's willing to talk about change, having the state's support to accomplish that means the resources come to San Diego to make it happen, and therefore, it becomes essential to make it sure that the policy is there, the standards are there, but the resources that go with it will come from the state. I respectfully ask for your eye vote. This is an extremely important bill. It's been looked at around the nation, CNN, Washington Post. I was on USA Today this morning, and this bill is probably the most significant bill in law enforcement that will be passed this year. I hope San Diego City Council joins us in making sure that that happens. I respectfully ask for your eye vote.
Thank you. We will now take up public testimony. Clerk, please proceed.
Yes, and we have over 120 speakers on this item, so again, please, your time will be limited to one minute per person. If someone has ceded you time, they must be present in chambers when your name is called. I'll be asking them to raise their hands. We'll begin with our opposition speakers. We only have two speakers in opposition, but there are a number of folks in opposition who did not wish to speak, so I'll read their names into the record after our speakers, and then we'll turn to the in-favor speakers, where we have the bulk of the speakers. There are seats in the front reserved for speakers. It's important for meeting management that folks be responsive when their name is called. Jack Schaefer is our first speaker. Mr. Schaefer, if you'll come forward, you'll have a minute. You'll be followed by Scott Chipman.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name's Jack Schaefer. I'm the President of the San Diego Police Officers Association. As you're aware, when Shirley Weber introduced AB 931, the precursor to AB 392, during the previous legislative session, it sparked immediate debate about finding the balance between reducing use of force incidents and protecting public safety. To be clear, our association supports reform, but it must be the right reform. Use of force incidents put lives at risk, and it can include the lives of our own officers. We would all stand to benefit from fewer lethal use-of-force incidents. However, we must do so in a way that doesn't jeopardize the safety of our officers and the safety of our communities. Finding the right balance isn't easy, but the stakeholders on both sides of this conversation have been determined to find it. We initially began this as a debate. It evolved into dialogue, which has evolved into negotiation between law enforcement groups and the Coalition of Criminal Justice Reform Advocates. By taking a firm stand on this issue today, the council may jeopardize the possibility of passing true reform.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Chipman, and I noticed that you -- would you like to speak? You'll have one minute, and then we'll turn to the in-favor speaker.
I didn't intend to speak, but when my name was called, I want to say one thing. This council has a tendency to ignore the advice of the police chiefs, and I think that is a big concern for people in the community, especially San Diego and its for safe neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition, Rachel Allen, Greg Down Norris, James Longley, Catherine Douglas, Stone Douglas, Jeff Chason, Cynthia Chason, Glenn Voak, Eva McIntyre, Sully, Sasha Rayoke, Down Norris, Grant Williams, Barbara Williams, and Marcella Tran all submitted speaker slips in opposition but did not wish Jeff Chason, Cynthia Chason, Glenn Voak, Eva McEntire, Evan McIntyre, Sally, Sasha Rayoke, Down Norris, Grant Williams, Barbara Williams, and Marcella Tran all submitted speakership slips in opposition but did not wish to speak. We'll now turn to the in-favor speakers. We have 118 folks, so please, again, be responsive and make sure the folks that are seating you time are present with you when I call your name. Akila Weber, M.D., so Dr. Akila Weber is our first speaker, followed by Francine Maxwell, followed by Rick Bramhall. And Akila, if you want to come forward, you'll have one minute.
My name is Dr. Akila Weber. I am a physician that cares for both pediatric adolescent and adult patients here in San Diego. I come to speak in support of the resolution and to remind you all that in November of 2018, the American Public Health Association met here in San Diego and recognized police violence as a, quote, "critical public health issue." In their policy statement, they mentioned that in 2016, at least 1,901 people were killed by law enforcement in the United States, which led to 54,554 years of life lost. Marginalized populations are inequitably affected by law enforcement actions and violence. In 2016, people of color accounted for more than 50% of years' life lost due to legal intervention, but account for just under 40% of the entire U.S. population. I urge you to support this resolution as it addresses a critical public health issue that is in our country, our state, and in San Diego County.
Thank you. Francine Maxwell is our next speaker, followed by Rick Bramhall, followed by Nadia Contreras. And there are two seats in the front for on-deck speakers. Ms. Maxwell, you have time seated by Nancy Cottingham. Is Nancy present? Thank you, ma'am. And Terrell Howard? Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Francine Maxwell, Fourth Council District. I stand here before you with one of my idols. Her name is Louisa Jenkins. This is a picture of her since night from 1957. I also stand here as the mother of a successful young black man who frequently has precursor stops in whatever car he drives, whether he's in Kate's area, whether he's in Sherman's area, or Marino's area. It is very critical that you pass this resolution and say yes. Yes to change. Yes to changing the narrative here in San Diego. Everyone talks about diversity. They talk about their opening and they want to change, but there is no action to change. This will help us move the action. We want everybody in their pretext stops to make it home safely. We all agree that they occur, and that's half the struggle. If we don't agree, we still want to show respect. Yes, there needs to be training, but you cannot train an officer to look at my black son and give him respect. That's not taught. This bill helps us move and change the narrative of what the conversation can have. When you look at what is coming in our next two classes of the academy, they're military. I need you to understand, we are liking the fact that we're going to have, we're going to help decrease that 200 that they say that we need here in San Diego, but we don't need any more gang suppression unit guys coming through the academy. And that's what the military men are identified as. So I want to make sure that you know that San Diego is about change. San Diego is about the movement forward. Respect can never be taught, no matter how much training you give someone. I think that there was a comment made about the fact that the messages are inappropriate. I spoke last night about Mr. Cannon and the rush to judgment. That was a misstep and a misspoke about our chief. David Nislet is everybody's chief. He's not just one person's chief, one community. He is the city of San Diego's chief. And when you say that you're the finest, you have to begin to dissect that. Are we really the finest? Because my black son, he gets stopped a lot. Sometimes his phone is charged and he can actually tape his encounter, and he comes home and we dissect those. He has conversations with many police officers in Southeastern Division. We have a captain that breeds respect. He interviews everyone that's coming to the Southeastern Division. And if they don't have a foundation of respect, they don't come to Southeastern San Diego. I want you to know that there are things that are happening in the city. They may or may not be happening at the rate that we like, but please vote yes.
Thank you. Rick Bramhall is our next speaker. Mr. Bramhall, you'll be followed by Nadia Contreras, followed by Liz Shopes. Those two should both be in the on-deck chair. You'll have one minute, sir.
Honorable President and Council members, my name is Rick Bramhall, and I'm happy to say that I live in President Gomez's district. I am in favor of AB 392. There's no place in the country where this change in law has led to more law enforcement deaths. I am convinced that most, if not all of you, recognize that voters, not the police, run this city, and you are the bosses of the Police Department. It seems like every month someone dies due to law enforcement officers locally. It seems like every week someone is attacked with undue force. Current SDPD policies and traditions reinforce racism and excessive force. I know that police like to paint laws like this as the reason they have trouble recruiting and retaining officers. I like to suggest that the opposite is true. A more professional force with more forward-looking policies will attract more competent and professional officers. Officers will be proud to serve the citizens of this city, not vice versa.
Thank you, sir. Nadia Contreras will be followed by Liz Shopes, followed by Khalid Alexander, and Ms. Contreras has time seated by Carolyn Vargas. Is Carolyn present? If you could raise your hand, Carolyn. Thank you. And Chris West?
I appreciate talking to Nadia.
Oh, so you'll have two minutes, ma'am.
Thank you. AB 392 could have saved Lamonte Jones, Paul Silva, Earl McNeil, Raul Rivera, Oscar Leo, Maria Webb, Elia Jenkins, Manuel Cruz, and so on. Fortunately, the people who got beaten recently, Trinell Cannon, Jessica Turner, Jose Trujillo, Francisco Javier, Jesus Rodriguez, Jose Nieto, and so on. I ask you today that you please pass AB 392, give people a chance to correct their bad choices, because people make bad choices every day, but it doesn't mean that they are bad people. You cops, you gang bangers, have a uniform on, and you need to remember that your family and your kids don't. You need to treat people the way you want them to be treated. You are not judge, jury, and executioners. Enough police brutality has haunted San Diego, not to mention the murders by cops. AB 392 will make it less legal for cops to abuse their authority. Humanize, that's all we ask. And if you're afraid for your life, you need to take off your uniform. Your job is to serve. Your job is to serve and protect the community. You need to do that. The Chief Police and so on, and everybody that's against this policy, they keep talking about how the officers' lives are going to be in danger, but you're not talking about how you're going to save lives. Trevor Sterling, Michael Albert, Daniel Burrow, Zachary Nestor Hernandez, Patricia, I can go on and on and on, and some of you are probably in this room. You have murdered people, and I don't know why you're still, yeah, I don't know why you still have a badge. So such cops are not limited to murder. There are way more out there, but we need to remember that those numbers keep going up. And whether it's one life in San Diego that was taken and murdered by police, or whether it was 10, or 100, or 172, one is enough. Because when one murder happens, a whole community bleeds and cries.
Thank you. Liz Shopes is the next speaker. Liz, you'll be followed by Khalid Alexander, followed by Tony Alfino. Those two should both be in the on-deck seats. You'll have one minute.
Hi. I'm here as a white ally for this bill. I think it's a wonderful bill, and I think it's a needed bill. The environment is not the only imperfect part of the equation. It's obvious there are some people on the Police Department that should not be on the Police Department because they cannot control their anger or their fear. I watched the video of that young man who was beaten up. That police officer was out of control. I'm a former ICU nurse. I've had to handle out-of-control people, either on drugs or psychotic, with my fellow nurses. And you know what? We never beat the shit out of them after we got them under control. That's it. Thank you.
Khalid Alexander. Khalid Alexander is the next speaker. He'll be followed by Tony Alfino, followed by Ann Elliott. Those two should be in the on-deck chairs. And Mr. Alexander, you have time seated by Armand King. Is Armand present? Thank you, sir. And Leila Az. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
A few years ago, we had the opportunity to come to this chamber and sit, stand before you and address Councilmember, former Councilmember Myrtle Cole, who, in this chamber, amongst many of you, had the audacity to say that the reason why racial profiling exists is because black people are committing crimes. She's no longer sitting here. That is democracy. Chief Nislet stood up here and he said his talking points, and I'm sure he may be a nice person in person. I've met him on a number of times, but they have their talking points. He was not elected. You were elected. We all request you to vote in favor of 392 because a vote against 392 is a vote against the community. And we are watching. We are going to continue to use democracy to fulfill our demands, and we're going to continue to use democracy to continue to avoid being abused and misused by those people who are supposed to be protecting us. Chief Nislet was not elected. None of the police that you see standing here before you were elected. You all were elected. We hold you accountable for the way that they treat us. You are the ones who are responsible for their actions on the street. You are the ones who are responsible for the multiple police officers that dragged a young man, Trinell Cannon, out of his car and beat him into the ground. This is a young man who's 20 years old. Franz Fanon, the philosopher and psychiatrist, he made a statement in the book, Wretched of the Earth, where he said that violence is always okay for the master, but never okay for the slaves. I'm asking you, at what point is it too much? At what point does a young man, at what point does a young woman who is not armed, do they have the opportunity to stand back? And in this land that we're living on, in the same way that we had no rights to stand up as we were enslaved physically, today we still have no rights to stand up to the police who continue to abuse us and misuse us and take advantage of us, our children, and our family members. That is your job. In a democracy, that is your job. And it's a sad state of affairs if you live in a country where you have elected officials who take their laws and take their orders from law enforcement. I had the opportunity to live in Syria for a number of years where law enforcement and police brutality and military occupation was a norm. We cannot allow that type of environment to continue. Those are the types of environments that our children are being raised with in southeast San Diego. Those are the types of environments that our children are being faced with in east San Diego. And so we want you, we all stand here today, and if those people who are supporting AB 392 and the people from the reclaiming the community movement can stand up, I want you to see us. If not, for God's sake, do it for the sake of your constituents. We are watching this vote carefully. Please do what is right.
Thank you. Tony Alfino is our next speaker. Tony Alfino, you'll be followed by Ann Elliott, followed by Shay Kawano Miller. Both Shay and Ann should be in the on-deck seats. You'll have one minute, sir.
Hi, my name is Tony Alfino, and I'm a member of Amnesty International Chapter here in San Diego. In December of 2017, we were invited by National City to observe their use of force demonstrations. I was one of four participants that was there that day. While I appreciate the anxiety of the police officials, I was killed three out of six times in the demonstrations that we participated in, but I observed the officials, the police officials, and amongst some of the things they said and did, it was cause for concern. We asked for and were graciously accommodated by the Police Chief to visit with him in next January, and we met with him. But some of the things, we presented him the amnesty use of force policies, and while he was gracious and accommodating, he seemed reluctant to move forward on those things. We ask for your movement forward on AB 392. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Elliott is our next speaker. Ms. Elliott, you'll be followed by Shay Kawano Miller, followed by Tasha Williamson, and both Tasha and Shay should be in the front row. You'll have one minute.
Hi, I'm Ann Elliott from San Diego, here in North Park. I fully support AB 392. Something that we haven't talked about is the fact that California is supposed to be the most progressive, you know, state in the country. But when it comes to our average of killing people, rate of killing people being 37% higher than the norm, we certainly are not. I do appreciate the fact that we are the safest city, and I thank the Police Department for that. But I think that we need to look at not only the changes that the Police Department is making here, but all over the state, because this is a problem all over the state. And I want to mention what people have been referring to in terms of racial profiling. I can't help but think that increased training would cause people to think a little more clearly about what course of action they're going to take before they just respond to their prejudices. And we need to remember that three out of the four people who are killed in California are minority people, people of brown or black.
Shay Kawano Miller. Shay is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Tasha Williamson, followed by Lori Thiel. They should both be in the front row. You'll have one minute, sir.
Hi, my name is Shay Kawano Miller. I'm actually here representing my partner, Jean-Wi Tran, who's at a retreat. We read a lot of news headlines of police shooting and brutality that every time it happens, we no longer shocked or dismayed. The list of victims is so long, but today I'm just going to add another name to that list. It's Elliot Nava.
Say that name?
Elliot Nava. He was chased by two police officers in Anaheim and executed by them. The two police officers shot 76 rounds. While driving, the police officer put in quite a few other magnums while shooting through his windshield. I am here today to basically say that both the police, the DA and both the police chiefs have come, came out saying that the two officers' actions were irresponsible and reckless, yet no charges have been brought upon the officers. The current standards, which allow the officers to use their gun to hold against civilians, is so low and has not changed since 1872 as we speak. But I am here today not just for that, but I want to be here to ask you for your support for AB 392. Thank you.
Tasha Williamson is the next speaker, followed by Lori Thiel, followed by Jamie Wilson, and Ms. Williamson has time seated by Dani Arisia. Thank you. And Tammy Jackson?
Thank you.
Is Tammy present?
I want to say one thing. I was standing outside. Before we start asking for training for officers, we need to train our city employees. Because there is a white woman standing outside. And another thing that Brother Khalid said, if we don't start dealing with the black and brown police brutality, eventually it will happen to white people. This lady standing outside talking to Michelle, a retired, mature teacher who is blind, was going to call the police on her because Michelle wanted to see if she could find a seat. Instead of figuring out how to get this disabled, retired teacher a seat, who does not look like us, but looks like some of you, and some of you behind me, she decided, I'm going to go get the police. I thanked the police officer for not moving, because had he done that, it would have gotten a lot louder. Michelle is about four foot nine. What would if a police officer had done dragging her out? That's how you do us, though. You drag us out, handcuffed, unarmed. An officer who was beating Trinell was there and present, had killed one of our southeast residents, shot him in the back of the head, and was let go and is still a police officer to this day. When Chief Nislet speaks, we don't believe him, we don't trust him because he does not speak the truth. Because what he said in his press conference was that Trinell charged the officer. And then he released a video that showed the officer dragging Trinell out. So when he stands before you and the people, we've lost trust, and he better regain it quick, because 2020 will be here soon. People better get it right. We are tired. We would appreciate if you understand what Khalid said, Brother Khalid said. We elected you. We will also vote you out.
Lori Thiel. Lori Thiel is our next speaker, followed by Jamie Wilson, followed by Nick Anora Montenegro. Those two should be in the front row. Ms. Thiel, you have time seated by Tamara Becker Varano. Is Tamara present? Thank you. You'll have two minutes.
I'm Lori Thiel, President of the League of Women Voters, San Diego, and I'm here today in support of AB 392. You'll hear a lot of impassioned testimony today from people in your community and your constituents, like Tasha. Many of them have had personal experience with police use of force. But you're also going to hear testimony from people like me, who look like me. Because even though we've had no similar experience, we nevertheless advocate for AB 392. And that's because passage of this bill is the right thing to do, regardless of your perspective. AB 392 will preserve human lives for both the public and officers. This bill would authorize law enforcement to use deadly force only when necessary to prevent imminent death or serious bodily injury and hold officers accountable for the use of deadly force when there are alternatives. The bill also specifies that officers can invoke the self-defense law that applies to the public. Community trust in law enforcement is undermined when force is used unnecessarily and disproportionately. Community trust in law enforcement is undermined when force is used unnecessarily and disproportionately. We believe changing the standard for the use of force from reasonable to necessary will reduce police and community violence, rebuild the community trust, and bring state law enforcement policies on use of force in compliance with recent court decisions and national best practices. The League supports violent prevention programs in all communities, and the active role of government and social institutions in preventing violent behavior, as well as the allocation of public monies in government programs to prevent violence. We strongly urge you to support AB-392. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie Wilson is the next speaker. Jamie will be followed by Nick Canora Montenegro, followed by Yvonne Elkin. Those two should be in the front row. You'll have one minute.
Hi, my name is Jamie Wilson. I live in District 4. Most of you know me. I have seven children. I'm raising four sons and three daughters in southeast San Diego. And the fact that I'm here asking that you guys enforce a rule to only kill my children if it's absolutely necessary is absurd. And for anyone to ever, in the future, after this meeting right here, any of you GSU, you officers, you sergeants, to ever question why the lack of trust stands here between us and you, you don't have the right to ever ask that again after this.
Nick Canora Montenegro, followed by Yvonne Elkin, followed by Letitia Bates, and those two should be in the front row. Ms. Montenegro, you have time seated by Marissa Westerfield. Is Marissa present? I don't see Marissa, so I'll put... She's coming. Okay, I'll give you two minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Council President and all Council members. I am Nick Canora Montenegro. I am an in-home supportive service provider here in San Diego, and a member of my union, UDW, the United Domestic Workers of America, UPM Local 3930. My union represents more than, or almost 25,000 caregivers in San Diego County, and we care for seniors and people with disabilities. Many of them are family members, many of us. We take care of our family members. And as caregivers, we urge you to support the resolution to support AB-392, the California Act to Save Lives. Studies have found that nearly half of people killed by police are people with disabilities, and this has led to so many unnecessary deaths. In Milwaukee in 2017, an unarmed young man named Adam Tramel, who had been diagnosed with schizophrenia, was killed by police, burst in on him in the shower, and called him by the wrong name. They ended up using their tasers on him and sedating him with ketamine, and his heart stopped, and he died. In Maryland in 2013, a young man named Ethan Saylor, who had Down Syndrome, was killed by police when he didn't want to leave a movie theater when the movie was done. The police tried to drag him out, and he struggled, crying out for his mother. The autopsy says he died of asphyxiation. This happens in California, too. Last year, we lost Butte County UDW member Myra Vekalishu. She was killed by police while having a mental health crisis. She was 56 years old. She was very active in her faith community, and she worked as a caregiver for seniors. And police records show, police began shooting at Myra 15 to 20 seconds after arriving on the scene. She was unarmed, and the only crime she was suspected of was trespassing. As caregivers, we demand that the unnecessary killing of people with disabilities by law enforcement is stopped. That's why UDW is a cosponsor of this AB-392 legislation, which would ensure that police exhaust all means before using deadly force. AB-392 would have prevented Myra's death, and it would have prevented the police officers who shot him from becoming killers. Let us live!
Thank you. Yvonne Elkin.
AB-392!
Yvonne Elkin, followed by Letitia Bates, followed by Kenneth Herman. And Yvonne Elkin has time seated by Lauren Beer for two minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Gomez and Council members. My name is Yvonne Elkin, and for the record, Mr. Cates, I am in your district. I attend city council meetings fairly frequently to support my community, but until today, I have never felt compelled to actually stand up here and speak out for myself. I am here to urge you to support the resolution in favor of AB-392, the Act to Save Lives. You will hear a lot of talking points today and statistics about the use of deadly force by law enforcement in California. I'm not going to repeat all of that. I just want to highlight that today is our San Diego City Council's opportunity to come down on the right side of history. Two weeks ago, I was appalled by a statement by one of our board of supervisors made in opposition to AB-392. She said, and I quote, "It would place an unreasonable and unfair burden on our law enforcement officers in use of force situations. Officers would have to show the use of force was necessary." Too high a burden to show that it's necessary? That is one of the most ridiculous statements I've ever heard. I say it is too high and unfair a burden to place on our communities to allow law enforcement officers to use deadly force any other time but when it's necessary. Think about that, Council members and Chief Nizlet. Do we really think that our police officers should be permitted to use deadly force when it's not necessary? Thank you.
Letitia Bates is our next speaker. Ms. Bates will be followed by Kenneth Herman, followed by Marissa Talbert. And Ms. Bates has time seated by Jose Calvero, Sarah Kent, Toni Young, Victoria White, and Kelsey Daniels. I'll put six minutes on the clock. Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Letitia Bates, and I'm the mother of Trenell Cannon. And is it fair to say that my son is allowed to get beaten and ganked out the car because he has committed crimes? And is it fair to say that the police department, they're able to commit their crimes, but they receive no repercussions for the crimes that they commit? They say that they don't have a good support within the community, and you know why? Listen at the statement that Chief Nizlet said live on TV. There is an investigation being done about my son's case, and he got up there and stated he seen nothing wrong with what his officers did before the investigation was complete. So who's to say that my child is going to get a fair trial when he goes to court? Who's to say? I feel hopeless as a black woman living in the community that I live in. So what are your thoughts, how my son feels, living as a black young man in the community that we live in? We pay our tax dollars for the people who are supposed to protect and serve, and they're killing us, and they're beating us, and they're getting away with it. So everybody else has to suffer repercussions, but not them? Why? We need answers. And like the people said, we voted you in here. And one thing I need to say, the mayor needs to look at Chief Nizlet, and he needs to step down.
That's right.
Because these are the people that we are supposed to be trusting to serve our community, and they're tearing us down. They're breaking us down, and they don't understand why they don't have a connection within the community. Why aren't we getting things done? Because this is the process that's being taken when it comes to their job that they're trained to do. The training is crap. I'm telling you today. Look at what's happened to my son. AB-392 needs to be put in place. More people are going to be beaten, more people are going to be killed, and their chiefs are going to justify it before an investigation is complete. What has happened to my son is unjustified, and I will keep on fighting and getting justice. So you all need to listen with your ears and not just watch what we're talking about here, and that goes for everybody. Because what happened to my son can happen to anybody, and you just don't have to have a criminal record for it to happen to you. Let's make that clear. A mother in my position, I should never have to go through this, dealing with people that are supposed to be protecting and serving with my child. If the arrest was made properly, I would not have no problem. We understand what my son did, and he understands his problem, and he will do his time, and so does the San Diego Police Department. You guys need to do your time also and be accountable for the things that you are doing. You are hurting and abusing your community. That's exactly what you're doing. And these are the people that we're paying tax dollars for. Everything in our community is gone. AB-392 needs to be put in place to save our lives, all lives, black, brown, all colors, and whites. At the end of the day, they say privileged by being white, but what we're looking at every day is privileged by wearing the police uniform. It's sad, and it's unjustified, and they're just like people just like us. They clock in and they clock out every day. They put on a uniform and they go home to their families every day. So why? Why? Why do they get to do the things that they do? Because they work for the police department? No. I don't think that's right. They need to be accountable for everything that they do, just like everyone else. My son's going to be held accountable for his mistakes, and the police needs to be held accountable for theirs. That's right. And you have officers that are condoning this in the video that was placed out on social media. You have officers walking past as they're beating this boy, which is my son. My son is six feet tall. In the video that was possessed that we put out, you cannot see not one limb of my son. And the guy who put his knee in my son's back, you're a murderer, and that's what you are, and that's what we're going to call you. We're not going to call you by your name because you could have killed my son. Am I supposed to be happy because my son's not dead? So I'm supposed to stop fighting because my son's not dead? Well, my son's alive, and you know what? I'm going to stand here and I'm going to fight for him until the end. And 392 needs to be put in process. And I have all these people that are standing behind me, and you know what? Like they said, we're watching you. The community is watching you. We're all watching you. So I invite you all to make the best decision.
Kenneth Herman. Kenneth Herman is our next speaker. Mr. Herman will be followed by Marissa Talbert, followed by Colleen Kuzak. You'll have one minute, sir.
Council President Gomez and members of the San Diego City Council, good afternoon. My name is Ken Herman. I'm a resident of North Park. I'm the president of a community organizing group called Justice Overcoming Boundaries, and I sit on the council of the Lutheran Church in North Park, Iglesia Lutera Nuestra Salvador, which is largely a Latina/Latino congregation. We believe that Dr. Weber's bill is based on a moral issue. It's based on equal justice, the application, the equal application of justice to all members of our society. I urge you to support AB-392 on its moral grounds. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa Talbert is our next speaker, followed by Colleen Kuzak, followed by Kristi Hill. Both Colleen and Kristi should be in the front row. Ms. Talbert, you have time seated by Thalia Nave, Emily Howe, and Sean Decourt, for a total of four minutes.
Good afternoon, Council members. My name is Marissa Talbert, and I'm representing the Earl B. Gillian Bar Association. Chris Gate, I live in your district. I am asking you to vote in favor of AB-392. Honestly, we're angry, we're hurt, and we're tired of dealing with this situation. And this, AB-392 is a step in the, a first step in the right direction. It's not an end-all, be-all. This is not the end. But it is the first step in the right direction. Chief Nizlet spoke to people not understanding the reasonable standard. I am a Navy veteran, and I understand the reasonableness standard all too well. I have had weapons release authority, and I have had to give weapons release authority, and I have had to be in the position to make a split-second decision. And I understand what goes on in making a split-second decision. And this killing is not necessary. Use of lethal force, there is a continuum, and there are other ways, there are other alternatives, that are often not used very well or not used at all. Chief Nizlet also acts like this bill is against San Diego. This bill is for the state of California, who has more deaths by police officers, by law enforcement, than any other state. So this is something that needs to be addressed throughout the entire state of California. Secondly, lethal for, this bill is, addresses lethal force and not non-lethal force. So people being maced at close range, which still can cause permanent damage, this bill does not address that. This bill addresses, is very narrowly tailored. It only addresses lethal force. It doesn't address being beat up within an inch of your life. Secondly, the district attorney has discretion over whether to prosecute this, which is a big deal. And prosecution does not mean conviction. So the same way I would have to go through a trial, officers still get full due process. They still have their right to self-defense. So this bill is necessary, and there's way more work to be done. This is not the end. This is, you know, police officers and people that are opposed to this bill have argued that it's going to lower recruitment. That's everybody's complaint. The military is complaining about lower recruitment as well, but there are several reasons why recruitment for police and law enforcement is lower. Low pay, physical standards, the length of the hiring process, there's all sorts of reasons why recruitment is lower. It's not just because false, accuse, supposed false narratives. And I just urge you to really consider this. This is the community. It doesn't get any better than this. This is a community asking for you to listen to what we are saying, because we are tired, we are angry, and if we were to respond the way that some of us want to respond, we would be going to jail. So please pay attention. Please do what your constituents are asking you to do, and if not, we'll be coming for your seats. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Kuzak is the next speaker. She'll be followed by Kristi Hill, followed by Cody Pedersen. Ms. Kuzak has time seated by Rochelle Clickman, Charles Ketrens, Dorothy Gezic, and David Wilson, for a total of five minutes.
If men were angels, no government would be necessary. If angels were to govern men, neither external nor internal controls on government would be necessary. In framing a government which is to be administered by men over men, the great difficulty lies in this: you must first enable the government to control the governed, and the next place, oblige it to control itself. Those are the words of James Madison in urging citizens to adopt and ratify the Constitution. In juvenile court, we see dysfunctional families where parents abdicate their responsibility to govern, seeking instead to be the child's friend. This is what is happening when governing bodies in a misguided effort to appease police unions shirk from their support of a law that would oblige the police to control itself. By obligating the police to restrict their use of deadly force to only those times necessary, you enable the effectiveness of the police in its job to protect and control the governed. I'm a criminal defense attorney. I've been so for 27 years. I'm also a policy advocate. I advise not just social justice groups, but also law enforcement agencies. I'm a mom of a 17-year-old. I live in Chris Ward's district, and I represent persons who live in all of your districts. I was a police dispatcher in the 80s. I was a member of the Fraternal Order of Police. I am a friend of the police, of good police. I'm trying to help the good police do their job by putting standards in there so when the police show up, they know that they're bound by those standards. I'm also an educator. I teach law students at California Western School of Law, and I teach police officers criminal justice policy, criminal law, criminal procedure, and criminology at University of Phoenix. First, let me debunk, in 2017, they came out with a study. They looked to see, is there a war on cops? And that study concluded that in every instance in which a police officer is killed in the line of duty does constitute a tragedy. However, despite popular rhetoric to the contrary, we find no evidence that the number of such instances is increasing post-Ferguson. To the extent that the number of police officers killed in the line of duty has changed at all, it has decreased slightly. I teach criminological theory. Defiance theory suggests that sanctions are more likely to be viewed as unfair when they are perceived as discriminatory, excessive, or undeserved. Many of the most heavily publicized deadly force incidents in recent history involved white police officers and unarmed black citizens. In fact, a recent examination of all citizens killed by police gunfire in 2015 demonstrated that black citizens are more than twice as likely as white citizens to have been unarmed, yet no more or less likely to have been actively attacking the officers. This is not a black or white issue. It's power versus lack of power, wealth versus poverty, and wrong versus right. It's power versus lack of power, wealth versus poverty, and wrong versus right. Study shows police and other persons see black youth and consider them to be older and less innocent, while white persons of the same age are, are perceived by the police as younger and more innocent. This is cognitive bias. And the current standard allows the police officer to accept and embrace that cognitive bias when they're making decisions. And we're trying to change that. In criminology, procedural fairness, we talk. One of the ways to reduce bias in police citizen encounters were the use of force makers to reduce bias in general. That includes citizens as well as police. For many citizens, their impressions of the police come from traffic violations. Efforts to improve these interactions and citizens view the police as fair may improve citizen compliance in situations where the police need immediate and active citizen compliance. Efforts to improve interactions with citizens in traffic encounters and everyday contact offers considerable potential for altering perceptions about the police as unfair or discriminatory. AB 392 helps to restore procedural justice. This standard provides accountability and rejects police actions that embrace cognitive bias. In the nineties, we did studies in San Diego that showed community policing to be an effective strategy. And then 2001 came along and all that was thrown out of the window for the militarization that, that was, was heralded in with 9/11. We need to return to community policing in a meaningful way, and this law will help us, help to return us there. On cognitive biases, drawing in advances in research and cognition, in police citizen encounters, both the police and citizens typically must and do rely on cognitive shortcuts to interpret each other's actions. Shortcuts are necessity when individuals must make rapid spur-of-the-moment decisions and when fear creates a further impetus to take decisive action.
If you can please have one last sentence, please.
I not only ask you to support AB 392, I demand it.
Thank you. Kristi Hill is the next speaker, followed by Cody Pedersen, followed by Isam Lagrechi. And Ms. Hill has time seated by Amanda Lee, Margaret Dooley, Samuli, Jazareen Abigad, Maria Alana Morales, Cindy Dickinson, no name, Susan, Ronaldo John Zapala, and Mark Sheets for nine minutes.
Good afternoon, Council President Gomez and council members. My name is Kristi Hill. I'm the deputy advocacy director at the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial Counties. I am here to urge the city council to pass this resolution supporting AB 392. We are a proud co-sponsor of this bill alongside a wide range of organizations, some are who are in the room today. We commend Council Member Montgomery for her leadership in bringing this resolution to the council. We also thank Assembly Member Dr. Weber for her leadership and unwavering voice for our community in introducing AB 392. We know that when police use tactics to slow down situations and de-escalate tensions, it saves community lives and also increases safety for, for officers. Too many lives have been shattered by unnecessary police use of force. In fact, as we have heard, more people are killed in California by police officers than in any other state in the country. This tragic reality disproportionately affects people with disabilities, mental illnesses, and Black and Latinx pop communities. We've heard the statistics, they're unacceptable, they're shameful. We know that AB 392 will save lives. I wanna share a story about Farouk Nihad. In April 2015, here in San Diego, Farouk Nihad was killed by an officer responding to a call about a man in an alley with a knife. In reality, Mr. Nihad was armed only with a pen. Mr. Nihad, an Afghan Army veteran, had been battling mental illness and PTSD for years. In the early morning hours of April 30th, Mr. Nihad was experiencing a manic episode when a police officer arrived in his car. The officer did not turn on his overhead lights on his vehicle when entering the alleyway, and it's unclear from the video whether Mr. Nihad even knew that a police officer was approaching. The officer got out of the car and put no barrier between himself and Mr. Nihad. The officer did not close his car door, which could've blocked Mr. Nihad's path. Within six seconds of arriving on the scene, the officer shot and killed the unarmed Mr. Nihad. AB 392 says that de-escalation should be tried before an officer takes another's life. In the case of Mr. Nihad, this method of policing could've saved his life. He could've been able to go home to his family that day. We have heard comments from law enforcement that the statistics presented in the resolution are misleading, and that one statistic, that 90% of people killed by the police were armed or perceived to be armed with a deadly weapon, was missing. What law enforcement leaves out is that while that statistic is technically true, it does not provide the overall facts surrounding the incident. For instance, Mr. Nihad, who was armed with a pen, would've been counted in this, in that statistic as being perceived to be armed with a deadly weapon. A weapon we now know was a pen, as would Stefan Clark, who was believed to be armed, but we know he had a cellphone. And Laquan McDonald, who was running away from the police at the time that he was shot and killed. Details matter. Passing AB 392 would mandate best practices about when police can use lethal force. Seattle and San Francisco are examples of cities that have successfully adopted a necessity standard. Many officers are only allowed to use deadly force to protect themselves or others from immediate harm. We've heard about the study that showed that Seattle saw a reduction in the uses of force without any impact to officer or public safety. Additional studies show that officers at agencies with stricter uses of force policies are actually less likely to be killed or assaulted. That's because tactics like de-escalation can diffuse potentially dangerous situations and prevent them from reaching the point when anyone, community member or officer, is injured or killed. It is past time to revisit and update a law that was enacted almost 150 years ago. The Supreme Court established a standard in Graham v. Connor, dealing with when police force is so excessive it violates a person's constitutional right. That standard is a floor, it is not a ceiling. States can and should ask more from their police than not to violate this minimum constitutional standard. This is what AB 392 does. Opponents of the bill have said that the bill would use hindsight to punish officers who have to make split-second decisions. This is not true. AB 392 is about finding solutions that move Californian forward. The bill specifically states that shootings will be evaluated based on the totality of the circumstances known to the peace officer at the time, and includes the tactical conduct and decisions of the officer leading up to the point of using deadly force. If an officer reasonably thought that a real gun was being pointed at his or her face and it turns out to be a toy gun, AB 392 would not punish them. It is true that officers have at times to make split-second decisions. It is also true that community members, especially Black and Latinx community members, have to make split-second decisions. When an officer approaches a black man and asks for identification, that black man has to think about, do I reach into my pocket and pull out my wallet? Do I announce it first? And while those various scenarios are running through about what I should do, if he doesn't make the right decision quickly, that officer might think that he's not complying and is resisting. These are the types of split-second decisions that Black and Latinx members wrestle with during encounters with the police, as we are all just trying to survive the encounter and get home to our families. Mr. Nihad did not make it home to his family. As the second-largest city in our nation's most populous state, San Diego has a responsibility to stand up and communicate to our state and nationally that families like Mr. Nihad's and our wider communities need meaningful change around police use of force in California. There is no excuse to do otherwise. In fact, to do otherwise is to vote for a status quo that we know results in people losing their lives. The community is watching. We are calling out for you to do the right thing and to not settle for more of the same. No excuses. We urge this council to pass the resolution. Thank you.
Cody Pedersen is our next speaker. Mr. Pedersen, you'll have one minute. You'll be followed by Isam Lagrechi, followed by Kate Yavendidi. One more? So two minutes I'll put on the clock. Go ahead.
Madam Chair, counsel, Cody Pedersen, D1. Wow, these have been incredible speakers and I'm humbled to speak in their, in their company. I'll just speak to something briefly, an element of this briefly, and that is that we need to dispense with the fiction that this reform will force police officers to go through some elaborate mental gymnastics at the moment of threat, to timeout in the middle of a firefight and write a three-to-five page on Nietzsche. The discharge of firearm is an extraordinarily rare occurrence for our law enforcement officers. Many officers go their entire careers without discharging their firearm in the line of duty. Given this rarity, officers must train relentlessly to make their responses to these situations automatic. Departments develop training programs to ensure that in that split second, the conduct of officers adheres automatically to the desired engagement narrative. I understand the concerns of officers and of the POA. But these new use-of-force criteria can and will be successfully incorporated by departments. Departments will develop and implement a response narrative and train their officers accordingly. If you want to do a solid for our city's officers, solve SDPD's crisis of low pay, low retention, and understaffing. But please, vote to support AB 392. This bill can be effectively implemented without endangering the lives of officers, and it will make our community safer, particularly people of color and those suffering from mental health challenges. Please, vote to support AB 392.
Thank you. Isam Lagrechi, followed by Kate Yavendidi, followed by Gita Applebaum. And Mr. Lagrechi has time seated by Clovis Honore Abdul-Walavala Mohammed, James Mohammed, Charles Mohammed.
I think you got that wrong. I only have.
We'll all come up. You should be a speaker slip there that says, yeah, three speakers. Ethan will be first, then it will be Clovis.
I apologize. So I can put 15 minutes on the clock and you guys can split your time the way that you see fit? Is that all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. My name is Isam Lagrechi. When I left the United Kingdom 12 years ago, my uncle told me, don't go to California because they kill people. And I'm standing here today as a U.S. citizen, listening to my police chief saying that his officers are scared while they carry a gun. How are we supposed to feel? May God have mercy on us. I'm also a father of a nine-year-old who dreams to become a police officer. Am I supposed to talk him out of it? I would pray not, because I would love for my son to be a good police officer, just like many out there, who are out there waking up every single day to protect and serve not just some of us, but all of us. God bless my sister Shirley Weber for actually putting this in front of us. And I pray that God will bless you also by doing the right thing and voting yes on this. Because people are aching, you know? Not everybody's aching, but most people are aching. And I hope that you guys will, will really hear the sorrow and the suffering of people who have lost kids. I'm sure many of you have kids. And if your kid has ever to, to go through something like that, I'm sure you would consider voting yes. And voting yes is the, is the right thing to do. Thank you.
My name is Clovis Honore. I am a resident of Paradise Hills. I am also the president of the NAACP San Diego branch. Our office is also located in the Ford City Council District. Council President and honorable council members, the public must be able to trust the police department, its officers, and its leadership. When the city of San Diego, its representatives, and its leadership try criminal cases in the court of public opinion, it impairs the ability of the public and especially the Black community to trust that due process will be received by those of us who have encounters with public safety officers. We must do better. We have seen in too many cases where the investigation of Internal Affairs and/or the district attorney have exonerated public safety officers who have engaged in activities that would not be tolerated and would, and would incur criminal charges if they were civilians. This calls into question whether this city, this country, and this state are going to continue to tolerate actions by those few police officers who do them that are out of bounds of the reasonable civil society, or if we will pass legislation and create departmental policies that hold those few police officers who do, do our children things that would never be allowed to be done to their children. If the policies of the San Diego Police Department, and indeed all police departments, have been formulated in such a manner as to deem deadly force to be acceptable under current circumstances and standards, where unarmed and fleeing citizens can be killed with impunity, that standard should be raised to a higher standard, one more in keeping with the highest values of our society, that all persons are created equal and should not be discriminated against because of the color of their skin, that we are all entitled to due process and should not be punished in the street rather than in a fair trial, and that we are all innocent until proven guilty, not tried in the court of public opinion. As a nation and as the city of San Diego, we can and must do better for the sake of all our children. The NAACP stands in favor of the resolution 335 and in support of AB 392, the California Act to Save Lives. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Council President Gomez, Council Member Montgomery, and all the council and those present. My name is Abdul-Waliullah Mohammed. I'm the local representative of the Allah Minusulu's Farqan and the Nation of Islam. I stand with all those who stand here today in solidarity to bring about a change that is much necessary for the things we see happen not only in San Diego, California, but throughout the country. I stand here today to question and ask you, as one of your presidents says, Thomas Jefferson, he said, "I tremble when I think God is a just God and his justice will not sleep forever." In the Bible, it says, "Justice stands afar off; equity cannot enter because truth hath fallen in the street." In the Book of Scriptures, the Muslim, the Holy Quran, we're taught to be bearers of justice, even if it be against our own selves. Justice is a central part of human life and dignity. I could stand here and quote to you the preamble of the United States of America, but you all know that because you swore allegiance to that Constitution that you would obey it. And so does every officer. AB 392 is a small step in the right direction. Now, my friends, my colleagues have said much here today, and I'm not gonna go over that. I wanna focus it on two things that I'm here for today, maybe three. Number one, to stand with my sister, Ms. Bates, Letitia Bates, and her son, Latrell Cannon, that was recently brutalized. Many spoke of that incident when they came up. Number one, I'm calling for the chief of police to give an apology to the citizens of the city of San Diego. And if he will not give his apology to the citizens of San Diego, then I'm also gonna ask that someone set for him to step down. Now, you would say, why Minister Mohammed, are you acting for that? Because he misrepresented the truth. I spoke with the chief of police directly. And let me make it plain for the record. I've worked with four different police chiefs since I've been in this city for 21 years, and not one of those chiefs from the Harano, to Lansdowne, to Shelley Zimmerman, to the current chief, cannot say that I, we have been open and fair. Anytime there have been a shooting in the city of San Diego and I've been called, I've always asked, the people have, wait till you get the facts. Do not rush to judgment. I said this very thing to the chief. When he told me, he said, Hugh, I heard that the officer was attacked by the young man. I said, chief, that is not the case. That's not what I heard. I heard that he was trying to get out of the car and he was pulled out of the car. Why am I disappointed in the San Diego Police Department? Because at the press conference, in the narrative that they showed, they showed a young man acting as if he was tackling the police officer for a four- or five-second clip. But when you and everyone in this room saw the helicopter version and other version that should be on the body cameras, we saw a young man trying to get out of a car that was a cop, a police officer ran around, grabbed him, and in the force of grabbing him, fell back and the young man fell on him. That is the true narrative of what happened that day. So number one, we would first like the chief of police to release then all of the camera, all of the footage. And if he's not willing to do that, we're calling for the DOJ or for independent study to come in and review that. I have no confidence in Internal Affairs to review this matter after the chief of police have said that he think that the beating and the forced use was adequate. Now, we have to be honest. I'm not an enemy of the police. I'm not an enemy of anyone on this council. But I have to ask some of you, as I look at your faces, I look at the communication that you had, nonverbal, are you any better than your fathers? We cannot sit here and think that racism is not at the root of some of this. AB 392 addresses a reprobate mind. You can't train a racist mind. And you can't tell me that racism does not exist in law enforcement. You cannot tell me that there's incidents of corruption that do not exist in Los Angeles, California, the Rampart, in Las Vegas, in New Orleans, in cities across America, in Boston, Massachusetts, areas where we found misconduct of police and a cabal that exist. Well, I'm saying to us today, to the city of San Diego, to this city council, to the chief of police, and to the highest official in this city, the mayor, that we need to examine what happened and bring justice to that situation. Now, what am I talking about in a very simple manner? Those officers that were at that place, we want all of their records to be looked at. We wanna see if any of them have any other cases against them of use of force complaints against them. Number two, we want all of the footage from the cameras to be reviewed by independent body of men, not IA. We're gonna have to step outside of the We're going to have to step outside of the box to get this done. I ask you, are you any better than your fathers? Why do I ask that? Because if you vote today not thinking that color matters, then you are just as biased as your forefathers were when they had us in slavery. I'm not making this a race issue, but for you to deny the reality is to deny what Dr. King says. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. In nineteen sixty-three, Dr. King led a march in Washington, D.C., and the analysis of Dr. King was that one hundred years after slavery, the black man and woman of America have still not received that truth that was said, that all men are created equal and endowed with enabler rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of action, the pursuit of happiness. He said, "I come to Washington, D.C. with a check that's been returned to the black man and woman insufficient funds, insufficient justice, insufficient jobs, insufficient education, and if you don't stand up, it will be insufficient representation." And so I'm asking you, if taxation without representation is tyranny, and you're not able to represent from all councilmen at it, because at the end of the day, you're going to speak for your heart today, your moral consciousness, your fairness and your sense of justice must speak to you today. A B three ninety-two is not an attack on the police. It's a step, I'm going to say it this way, my other colleagues didn't say it, is to tame racism that exists in law enforcement throughout this country. And if you think I'm lying, you tell me why then so many unarmed black men and women, so many brown men and women, and all the poor people are being murdered at the hand of police. You're going to have to be politically brave today. You're going to have to be able to step outside of the box. You're going to have to have your conversation in your mind. Am I any better than my fathers? Or am I voting for this because I need the police officers and pole bar? We need all of the unions to be elected for our next official. I say this also to black police officers on the force. My young sister said this to me. She asked a police officer on the force. She said, "Why did you let them beat him like this?" He said, "I didn't see anything." I say to you, I would rather lose a job than be a coward. I would rather lose a million dollars, a billion dollars, than be afraid to speak the truth to power. The city council of the city of San Diego have an opportunity to stand in the cusp and to do the right thing. The bill that Assemblywoman Shirley Weber introduced is the right thing, in the right step in the right direction. I'm asking San Diego, every one of you, to vote for this. She said it, it will not be or may not be the final bill. There may be some changes. This does not threaten police officers. And this thing about San Diego, this is not an isolated, this isn't what happened to Mr. Connor. I have other people that can stand up and tell you, other young people are being brutalized. The gang task force is exactly what it is. It is a gang that's made up of many members of the San Diego Police Department, many of who, guess what? Do not look like us. Now, I don't know what that unit is comprised right now or what the composition is, but I know back in the day when we were dealing with this, I know out of the seventy-something officers that were in the gang unit, there was only three or four blacks, two or three of our Spanish-speaking brothers and sisters, and the rest of them was white, most of whom do not live in our community. We're being arrested by those that don't look like us. We're being tried and convicted by those that don't look like us, and we're being sent to prison in juries of those that don't look like us. You have an opportunity to do a moral issue, as my brother, someone said earlier. You have a condition now to say, you know what? I'm going to make a difference. With that, I say to the city council, support A B three ninety-two. I want to thank my councilwoman for her bravery, for her stance, not only since she's been on the council, because when she wasn't on the council, she stood up for justice. She's not looking for the next political office. She wants to stand up for justice, and I believe when she leaves this, she will stand up for justice. My teacher tells me, the Alba Elijah Mohammed, the Minister of Farqan, they say, "Justice is something that lies down with you at night, and it gets up with you in the morning. Justice is a principle of fair and equitable dealing. May God bless you to deal fair, to be equitable, and some of you to step outside of the box, rise above your own implicit biases, and do the right thing for the citizens of San Diego and helping the state of California to once again be the leaders in this country." Thank you, and God bless.
Kate Yavendidi. Kate Yavendidi is key present. You'll be followed by Gita Applebaum, followed by Christopher Rice Wilson, and both Christopher and Gita should be in the front row. You'll have one minute, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Kate Yavendidi. I'm with Women Occupy San Diego, and I'm also a member of the National Lawyers Guild, which is a national progressive bar association. And I want to speak to what Chief Nesly was talking about, community trust. As you know, Women Occupy San Diego has been working on a charter amendment to the C R B, and in our work on that, what we have learned is the importance of community trust in connection with law enforcement, and it's really clear today, I'm sure to everyone sitting in front of me, that a large segment of the community has, does not have trust in law enforcement. We don't trust that law enforcement is going to handle certain members of the community or treat us properly. I mean, I know that from my own experience, and many members of the community here have talked about their own experience. What we, we support the resolution in support of A B three ninety-two. We believe, you've heard about the statistics, what we also believe
At least one last sentence.
This will reduce confrontations. I would like to know why the Police Department is not supportive of transparency and accountability. That's what is reducing community trust in San Diego.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gita Applebaum is our next speaker, followed by Christopher Rice Wilson, followed by Amy Zamudio, who should be in the front row. You'll have one minute, Ms. Applebaum.
Hello. I'm Gita Applebaum. I'm a medical provider, and I live in Rancho Penasquitos, and I want to address this recent hate crime that we had in power, the shooting in a synagogue. My husband is a Jewish doctor, and I have three sons, and they all look different. My eldest son looks like a Mexican and could be like ISIS. My middle son is blond and green eyes, and my other one is very white. I see around in this room, we focus on so much on color. Let's get rid of color. I want to thank you so much, Dr. Weber, for having this bill, something we can dialogue about, A B three ninety-two. And Monica Montgomery, thank you for being a cognizant presence here for truth and justice. We are scared of people with guns. I've lived in San Diego thirty-nine years. I do not own a gun. Let's talk about change. Let's talk about respect. Let's talk about human dignity. So I want us to pass A B three ninety-two. Thank you very much.
Christopher Rice Wilson, followed by Amy Zamudio, followed by Janice Luna Reynoso, and Mr. Rice Wilson has time seated by Pamela Marin, Anthony De Guzman, Nora Cardona, and Hazel Maganda Chavez, for a total of five minutes.
Good afternoon, Council President Gomez, City Council Members. I first want to thank you, Council Member Montgomery, for your courage and your bravery. I want to thank Assemblymember Weber for putting this bill forward, and I want to say it's not easy to take a stand in what will be perceived as standing against the police. But we got to stand up for ourselves. We are dying. When I say we, I don't mean black people. I don't mean Latinos. I mean non-police officers. We are dying, and we have to make a change. We have to stop this. Anytime you have to bring a law forward that makes it necessary to kill somebody, because so many people have been killed unnecessarily, that's a state of our society, and we have to make a change. And people ask why we don't trust the police. So I'm going to read from Ta-Nehisi Coates. It's a letter to his son. "I write you in your fifteenth year, and I'm writing you because this was the year you saw Eric Garner choked to death for selling cigarettes. Because you know now that Renisha McBride was shot for seeking help, that John Crawford was shot for browsing in a department store, and you have seen men in uniform drive by and murder Tamir Rice, a twelve-year-old child whom they were oath-bound to protect. And you have seen men in uniform pummel Maureen Pennick, someone's grandmother on the side of the road. And you now know, if you did not know before, that the police departments of your country have been endowed with the authority to destroy your body. It does not matter if the destruction is a result of an unfortunate overreaction. It does not matter if it originates in a misunderstanding. It does not matter if the destruction springs from a foolish policy. Sell cigarettes without the proper authority, and your body can be destroyed. Resent the people trying to entrap you, and your body can be destroyed. Turn into a dark stairwell, and your body can be destroyed, and the destroyers will rarely be held accountable. Mostly, they will receive a pension. The destruction is merely a superlative form of a dominion, whose prerogatives include friskings, detainings, beatings, and humiliations. All of this is common to black folk, and all of this is old for black folk. No one is held responsible, and there is nothing uniquely evil in these destroyers or even in the moment. They are merely men and women enforcing the whims of our country, correctly interpreting its heritage and legacy. It is hard to face this, but all of our phrasing, white, race relations, racial chasm, racial justice, racial profiling, white privilege, even white supremacy, serves to obscure that racism is a visceral experience, that it dislodges brains, blocks airways, rips muscle, extracts organs, cracks bones, and breaks teeth. And we can never look away from this, because we see it every day. We see it every day. In nineteen ninety-seven, I was living in Korea, and I got a phone call, and it was because my nephew had been killed. So I'm going to read from the L.A. Times. "Eighteen-year-old Dwight Stiggins was shot to death by a West Covina police officer last weekend while running away after he was stopped for jaywalking. West Covina police say Stiggins was fired on as he was coming up from a crouch and turning, his hand emerging from the waistband of his baggy pants. The officer chasing him say they believed he had a gun, he was reaching for a gun, but there was no gun. Instead, stuffed in his pants was paper, cookies, and a Bible." My nephew was shot dead, May second, nineteen ninety-seven, for jaywalking. That's what the paper says. I can tell you that he never would have took off running for jaywalking. He had no warrants. He was not committing a crime. We have to do something to tell police that it is not okay to kill people out of fear and fear alone. To hold police to a standard that is used for people not trained to deal with the situation is corrupt. Police should be held to a higher standard to kill people, and that is what three ninety-two will do. Please support this resolution. Support life. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Zamudio. Ms. Zamudio will be followed by Janice Luna Reynoso, followed by Arameek Glass Blake. They should both be in the front row. You'll have one minute, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Amy Zamudio, and I live in La Jolla, have lived there for forty years, do most of my shopping in Pacific Beach. I used to live on Termalene as well. So this is kind of more for Barbara and Jennifer Campbell. I'm not sure how much of an impact A B three ninety-two has on our communities, because we're mostly white, and all of our interactions with law enforcement are very peaceful. I'm not a very good driver, so I've had my interactions, and it goes smoothly, and it goes nicely, and it goes as it should, and when we do something wrong, we're held accountable. I do think you both are very aware, I do spend most of my time south of the eight, and what I see is very different, and I've sat with too many families over the past three years that have been victims of police brutality and have lost a loved one. So I need you to support this, even though it doesn't
Thank you so much, ma'am.
impact our community. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Janice Luna Reynoso is our next speaker. Janice, are you present? If not, Arameek Glass Blake, please come forward. You'll be followed by Isaac Wang, followed by Mary Lou Finley. Those two should be in the front row. And Ms. Glass Blake, you have time seated by Catherine Cox and Ellis Rose, although I believe Ellis Rose has a slip in to speak. Are you planning to speak?
For a different item.
So you'll be three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. So as much as I support A B nine three two, I'm not here to beg nor convince you why black lives, why brown lives matter. I'm not here to convince you to let us live. The Bible says, judge a tree by the fruit that it bears, and so I'm going to be judging you by the fruit that you bear and the vote that you give, and then we will operate accordingly. I'm here today really to talk about what happened last week with Mr. Cannon. For a person who has put my reputation, my name, on the line defending many officers, even Nesly at some point, saying, give him a chance, give him an opportunity, let him grow into this, I am disappointed that last week he got up and he lied. I constantly say, conflict, when nurtured properly, produces growth. And right now, we are in conflict, and he is not nurturing this, and we cannot grow. So I'm saying, when a young man is attempting to get out the car, and an officer pulls him out of the car, and six officers are on every limb of his body, like his mother said, you could not see his body, and he's tall, but all of these officers weighed two times his size. You see an officer putting his knee in him. You see an officer punching him multiple times in his back, in his head, in his side. He is a twenty-year-old man. Still room, still time to rehabilitate. Still room, still time to change his whole life. Now he has to deal with the trauma of being brutalized by an officer, while his girlfriend sits in the backseat of a car where officers point a gun at her head and tell her to stop recording and call her out of her name. Watch all the videos. Last week, most of you guys know I work with young people, Generation Justice. I got a call a few nights ago. One of the young ladies I work with was arrested. She was arrested for recording officers. Again, the culture in this department is disrespectful. Let's not just talk about, the only thing they'll admit to is that they have horrible customer service. There's a lot of other things that they need to admit to. Warrants do not warrant a beating. Having a criminal record does not mean you get to abuse me. And I'm just saying, not only vote for this, but you need to look at all the videotapes. There needs to be an independent investigation, and we need to abolish and remove the gang suppression unit.
Thank you. Isaac Wang. Isaac Wang. Isaac, please come forward. You'll be followed by Mary Lou Finley, followed by Mitchell Woodson, who should be in the front row with Mary Lou Finley. You'll have one minute.
Good afternoon. I come to you as a former military officer and a combat service veteran. I have great respect for law enforcement. During my second tour as a force protection officer in the U.S. Navy, I had to train sailors on how to use M nine and M sixteen. I had to teach them the deadly force triangle, opportunity, capability, intent, and an enemy had to meet all three of those conditions before using deadly force. I had to teach them how to use the use of force continuum, which goes from presence to verbal commands, to contact controls, compliance techniques, non-lethal, and finally, deadly force. As someone who's been pepper sprayed before, I can tell you, non-lethal works. And it works pretty well. There are international standards for military use of force. The law of war, also known as the law of armed conflict, governs the conduct of armed hostilities. The rules of engagement are directives that delineate the circumstances and limitations under which use of force will initiate and continue combat engagement.
And one last sentence, please.
Yeah. Please support three ninety-two. This isn't political. This is human rights.
Thank you. Thank you. Mary Lou Finley. Mary Lou Finley will be followed by Mitchell Woodson, followed by Tony Hawkins. They should both be in the front row. You'll have one minute, ma'am.
Yeah. My name is Mary Lou Finley. I'm a seventy-two-year-old retired, no, seventy-four. Yeah. Seventy-four-year-old retired special educator assistant from the San Diego Unified School District. I live in La Mesa. I am the co-chair of the San Diego Central Committee of the Peace and Freedom Party. I have run for office four times, and I still tell people the I have run for office four times, and I still tell people the way to tell when a politician is lying is if their mouth is open and a sound is coming out. So don't lie to us, please. I've been a member of the San Diego Committee Against Police Brutality since 1989. And when you talk about San Diego, you have to realize that for seven years in a row, San Diego had the worst record in the country for killing unarmed citizens, seven years in a row. So you cannot somehow claim exceptionalism for San Diego any more than you can claim exceptionalism for white Americans. It's time to stand up, end this cycle, this endless cycle of white supremacist policy. Police grew out of slave captures. It's time to end it.
Thank you.
Please, please vote for this resolution. Thank you.
Mitchell Woodson, followed by Tony Hawkins, followed by Patrick James Gorham. And Mitchell Woodson has time seated by Pedro Rios for two minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Michelli Woodson, and I'm a criminal defense attorney for a local homeless advocacy agency, Think Dignity. Yet my most important role is as a mother, and I'm a mother to two beautiful black children. When my daughter was just six years old, she was playing in a playground with a little girl, when the little girl's mother pulled her daughter away from mine and told her that she could not play with my daughter because she was a bad person because of the color of her skin. My daughter was just six years old. Communities that do not look like us continue to perpetuate the idea that black and brown communities pose a danger simply because of the color of our skin. Because of this, I must have conscious conversations about the social injustices that I will never be able to protect my children from. I must spend time speaking intentionally about the dangers of living in our community with their beautiful brown skin. I am angry with the knowledge that no matter the amount of degrees I've obtained in the safe home I'm able to provide, I cannot shield them from the systematic racism that inherently exists in our police departments. My heart aches knowing that regardless of how many thoughtful conversations I have with them, I cannot shield them from the fact that in the state that we have always called home, more people are killed by police officers than in any other state in the nation. And that the people that are killed almost always look like them. It can bring me to my knees, knowing that no matter how many times I remind them of the beauty of their brown skin, they are 3.2 times more likely to be killed by an officer than their white counterparts, even when they are unarmed, impose no threat of deadly force. As any other parent, I spend my life aiming to provide my children with everything a child deserves, love, health, safety, and a community that values their lives. AB 392 provides a clear and common sense standard that requires officers to use deadly force only when necessary, to protect against imminent threat to their lives and the lives of others. Today, I'm asking our city council members to stand with our community, to vote yes on AB 392. Simply stated, I'm asking you to let us live.
Thank you. Tony Hawkins is our next speaker. Tony Hawkins will be followed by Patrick James Gorham, followed by Wendy Wheatcroft. They should both be in the front row.
Greetings. I'm bringing your greetings from the Southeast Community Presbyterian Church. What does justice look like? Justice is not blind only those who have the power to distribute justice. Anytime those in power who refuse to distribute justice equally do not deserve the opportunity to represent the people, for they are the problem blinded not by justice. So please do the right thing. People, justice equally, who is not blinded. So when you are able to give justice, do that. Don't just sit idly by and turn your head. Justice is not blind only those who turn their heads from justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick James Gorham is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Wendy Wheatcroft, followed by Mark Adams. They should both be in the front row. You'll have one minute, sir.
Hi, my name is Patrick. Thank you, Council President Gomez. Thank you, Councilmember Montgomery, for bringing this up. I'm surprised to be here. When I heard that this was an issue that could go either way, I just, sorry, I'm too tall. I'm surprised to be here. I'm surprised this is something that we're debating right now. As a speaker before me said, the alternative to using force only when it's necessary is to allow police officers to use force when it's not necessary? This is a moment in history, and we are sick. We've been poisoned by injustice and atrocity after atrocity till they blend into each other, and we can't tell one from the other. We don't want to put San Diego on the wrong side of history. I thank you so much, Dr. Weber, for your work in the Assembly. I'm not worried about it passing there, but how can we do this? We have to support improving our justice system. We have to do better. Please support AB 392. It's the least we can do.
Thank you. Wendy Wheatcroft is the next speaker. She'll be followed by Mark Adams, followed by Dr. John E. Warren. They should both be in the front row. You'll have one minute.
Hi, I'm Wendy Wheatcroft, D7, and I'm here representing Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. Our national gun violence prevention organization is supporting this bill, and it's the first time our organization has gotten behind a bill like this. We support these policies and laws to discourage lethal force and encourage de-escalation. We know that this will have no negative impact on crime or harm to police based on research. And really, what it comes down to is this: Guns are the number-one leading cause of death for black children and teens in America. The number-one leading cause of death, and police violence is gun violence. We have to remember, there's no such thing as other people's children. My kids have blond hair, blue eyes, and this will likely never affect them, but that does not mean that we should not speak up about this and that we should not care about it. San Diego has been hurting, and I've been on the edge of this pain for the past year. We need to listen to, believe, and center black and brown humans in San Diego. Thank you.
Mark Adams, followed by Dr. John E. Warren, followed by Anita Turner. They should both be in the front row. And Mr. Adams has time seated by Mark Robinson and Jeffrey Karahamuli. So you'll have two minutes, or three minutes, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Mark Adams, and I am a campus minister at the University of San Diego. I'm also a resident in District 2 in Linda Vista. I am here today to urge you all to support AB 392. Now, I grew up heavily shaped in the Catholic faith and by the Catholic social teaching, which is based on the sanctity and the dignity of every human life. From that flows everything else. It is based on the idea that each of us are made in the image and the likeness of God. And so I urge you to support this resolution, which I believe supports that foundational idea. I believe this resolution recognizes the worth and the dignity of each human life, whether it's a person that's been suspected of a crime or even a person who's been called to uphold the law. I believe that it is necessary, in fact, it is essential, that we respect every human life. I recognize that we have a cancer sweeping through this country. I recognize that there have been far, far too many deaths at the hands of law enforcement. Just yesterday, I heard news of another death in Texas. And I was deeply, deeply moved when I heard news of the death of Mr. Alfredo Lingo right here in San Diego. And so I am here today, compelled by my faith, to speak up, to stand up to a great, great injustice that we are seeing across this land, but more specifically here in San Diego. And I believe that this resolution actually really holds law enforcement to a higher standard, recognizing that we truly believe in our police officers. We believe that they can be better. We can all be better. Because at the end of the day, it's about respecting each of our lives. I will leave you with a quote, a quote from one of my personal heroes, Martin Luther King Jr., who said this before leading a march across the Edmund Pettus Bridge. "There is nothing more tragic in all the world than know right and not do it. I cannot stand in the midst of all these glaring evils and not take a stand." I'm asking you today to take a stand and let us live. Thank you.
Dr. John E. Warren. Dr. John E. Warren, you'll have one minute, sir. You'll be followed by Anita Turner, followed by Andrea St. Julian. They should both be in the front row.
I am John Warren, publisher of the San Diego Voice at a Viewpoint newspaper. And I'm here to say, and our paper's been here for 60 years, during the past 35 years, I've seen too much of this, too many deaths that were unnecessary. I want to applaud Dr. Weber, as Rosa Parks said a moment, for taking a stance in the middle of this. And the need for the culture change is evident in this room. I can't understand why there are so many police officers here when the community has come out to just express your views on a matter, but when other people who don't look like us are in this room, it's not filled with the same amount of presence. And this is the same police department that's worried about its budget. Maybe we need to count the dollars of the 30-some people sitting around the wall. And if you can't feel safe in this meeting with us expressing ourselves, then we have a greater need for 392 than the rest of the city does. Because this is where the evidence is, the very fact that people are just here, expressing how they feel, and they're treated this way. So for the members who are going to vote, I would say, remember that the people here live beyond just the 4th district. We live throughout the city. And as Marcus Garvey said, "The sleeping giant is now awake." Thank you.
Thank you. Anita Turner. Anita Turner will be followed by Andrea St. Julian, followed by Melina Taylor. And those two should be in the front row. You'll have one minute.
Yes, I'd like to start by saying I have great respect for dentists. That sounds like a ridiculous statement, doesn't it? When people have to come up and say, "I have great respect for police." I mean, I just want to come to common ground. In every profession, we want good people, we want decent workers, so that we can respect those in every single profession. If you're doing a good job, we applaud you and we support you. There is no one that is exempt from these things. And what we need to do in every profession also is weed out the bad employees, weed out the ones that are abusing their power and their authority, and especially those who hold a power of life and death over others. And then, secondly, I wanted to say that, let's see, I wanted to bring up the case of Jesse Smollett. After charges were dropped against him, the DA wanted a special investigation to find out how come he wasn't charged. Why is this not happening with our police officers who are not being held accountable?
Ma'am, your time is up. Please, one last sentence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea St. Julian, followed by Melina Taylor, followed by Will Rodriguez Kennedy. And Andrea St. Julian has time seated by Michael Brackney for a total of two minutes.
Yes.
And just before your time, I'm just going to remind us, please be mindful of the time. There's a lot of speakers. This is our first item of the rest of the agenda. I want to make sure that we give everybody ample time, so please be mindful of that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Andrea St. Julian. I am president of the Earl B. Gilliam Bar Association of San Diego County. As attorneys, some of whom work on both sides of the criminal justice system, the members of the bar association strongly support AB 392. In listening to comments in opposition to 392, I was disappointed at how they deeply distorted what AB 392 was about. Current law allows police to use deadly force, even if there is no threat to life and there are safer alternatives available. AB 392 would merely prevent the use of deadly force in these situations. Nothing about this bill puts the lives of law enforcement at greater risk. Statements to the contrary have no basis in reality. They are false and made to inappropriately inflame the passions of the public and of this council. They are designed to mislead. AB 392 is a truly modest and reasonable proposal, but it is also a fundamentally important proposal. It will increase the level of trust between law enforcement and the residents of this city. It will also increase the level of accountability of law enforcement to its residents. The president's task force on 21st century policing found that increased trust and accountability are two of the most important factors in achieving effective policing. If this council wants more effective policing, then it will vote in favor of AB 392. If this council wants to do a better job of protecting its residents and its law enforcement, it must vote in favor of AB 392. I trust that each of you will make what you know is the right choice. Vote in support of AB 392.
Thank you. Melina Taylor is our next speaker. Melina Taylor. She'll be followed, is she not here? Then we have Will Rodriguez Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy, Rodriguez Kennedy, please come forward. You have time seated by Dan Castillo for a total of two minutes, and then you'll be followed by Yasmeen Obaid.
Hi, my name is Will Rodriguez Kennedy. I'm the chair of the San Diego County Democratic Party. I did want to let you know that it is the democratic position that we support AB 392. But I also wanted to speak with you because I am a Marine Corps combat veteran. And I want to talk about a document that is taught in the basic school in the United States Marine Corps, which dictates that the laws of war, even in a combat zone, violence is only authorized when it is deemed a military necessity. Furthermore, the Department of Defense dictates that in the most recent Use of Force Matrix, actually Isaac Wang talked about it, it talks about not only do you only use force and violence when it is necessary, but it also adds the additional requirement that you establish capability, intent, and then whether or not they can carry out the threat, right? So the military, in a war zone, an 18-year-old Marine Corps soldier, or Marine, would be held to a higher standard on the use of military force, or the use of force than our police officers here in the garrison or peace times. So it's very important that we understand that reality because our troops, which have less training on this specific issue, are held to a higher standard. And we should therefore have a higher standard when we're talking about dealing with civilians in the United States. So I, as a military combat veteran, I've actually experienced, I know, I've trained Marines on the use of force, I've trained the Marines on what is lawful use of force. I've actually been in these split-second situations in which you have to make a decision. And it's important to note that we have to raise the standard to necessary, and I hope the council has the courage to do that today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yasmeen Obaid, followed by Michelle Krug, followed by Abdurrahim Hamid. And those two should be in the front row. You'll have one minute, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you all for having me here today, and everyone else from the community representing. We appreciate your time and commitment to us and our communities. I'm going to go ahead and start with the obvious. The fact that we have more than 120 people in here today just asking you to vote yes on AB 392 should be enough for every single one of you to vote yes, because that's your community, and you're supposed to be representing the community. But let's take a step back and say that that's not the sole reason and purpose behind every single person in this room, or every single person on this council. Let's talk about common sense. AB 392 guarantees that civilians are safe and says that lethal force could be used, however, it should be limited only when necessary, which is exactly what's supposed to be already happening. However, that's not the case, and therefore, I'm here today to ask you to vote on AB 392 and represent the communities that you are here serving today and do the right thing and stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Michelle Krug. Michelle Krug, you'll be followed by Abdurrahim Hamid, followed by Herman C. Collins. You'll have one minute, Michelle.
Good afternoon. I am Michelle Krug, a proud resident of City Council District 4. Thank you, Ms. Montgomery, for bringing this. I really want to ask you to please be brave, please be courageous, and pass this. If nothing else, although it doesn't affect the legislature directly, it affects us here in your city in terms of changing this culture. And just to correct the record, I've never been a teacher. I was actually a 30-year city employee, retired for the last 10, having cleaned your wastewater, wastewater operator for 30 years. I have been in this chamber I have, I have been in this chamber all of those 40 years, and I, the culture that I am seeing, just in people coming to talk, it's frightening that there is this arrogance or this dismissiveness. Please, please, vote yes on this resolution.
Thank you. Abdur Rahim Hamid, followed by Herman Collins, followed by Bree Rivera. And it's my understanding that Johnny Hamid has seated you her time, so you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Abdur Rahim Hamid. It is very clear to me today that we have an embedded racism and a culture of discrimination. The people are speaking today, not black people, not white people, but people. And it is a, it is a clear-cut line of demarcation that law enforcement sees this as a threat. First of all, I want to give homage to Dr. Weber for the support of bringing this initiative to the, to the body, along with my councilwoman, Monica Montgomery. I'm here today to represent John Harris, a Negro who was killed in Dallas, Texas in 1939, my grandfather. And the deputy that was, that killed him was charged with his murder, which was unprecedented. I'm also a victim of police brutality at 16 years of age, being handcuffed and beat by two cowards in the back of a police car. My son, 20-years-old, was beat, beaten by police at a taco restaurant where the owner felt so bad, he said, "You have to take this and show this to the police." So, the cops, police use their discretion to abuse the law and abuse their authority. What this bill is going to do is going to temper that. But you have to change the culture. Because when I close my eyes, I see human. I don't see race, I don't see color, I don't see gender, I don't see size, I see human beings. And the Holy Quran says that Allah (SWT) created us in tribes and nations, not to despise each other, but to come to know each other. You are the lawmakers today. You are the same, you're in the same position of those lawmakers who established Jim Crow and slavery. You have to do the right thing today by the people. The people are speaking. And don't be intimidated, because if they were really looking at this, this is really to protect the cops. I have good police friends. I like Nesbitt. We have, you know, we have had a relationship. So I'm saying that this is a call for justice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Herman Collins is our next speaker, followed by Bree Rivera, followed by Maria Salery. And Mr. Collins has time seated by Robert Tambuzzi for a total of two minutes.
Listen, I approach you today with my hands up, because I'm a 66-year-old black man. I'm too big to fight, too old to run. I look around here, there are more than 34 police officers in this building. Three are black. I know one of them by name. I'm afraid as hell, because they've got a gun, and a badge, and a license to use it. I aided the city of National City in creating their civilian police review board. It allowed folks to look at things. I learned about the Peace Officers' Bill of Rights. Citizens need some rights, too. We're asking you to care about us. I shouldn't have to have my hands up. I'm a good guy. I'm a good guy. I'm a good guy.
Bree Rivera, followed by Maria Salery, followed by Ismailan Abdallah. And Bree has time seated by Tarek Hadera and Laura Bau for a total of three minutes.
My name is Bree, and I'm Nani Saurao Rivera. On Sunday, May 27, 2018, almost one year ago, my uncle Raul Rivera was killed by three San Diego police officers in the intersection of Hollister Street and Tecaio in South Bay, San Diego. Hours prior to Raul being killed, a community member called 911 to report him as a jumper when he was positioning himself at a nearby overpass near Saturn Boulevard. After Raul expressed that he was depressed officers, they were able to talk him down, but Raul was allowed to walk away without any of his family being notified, or him being taken in for a psychological observation. As the day progressed, his cry for help was met with extreme violence from San Diego police. Raul was walking near the intersection of Hollister Street and Tecaio when he was approached by border patrol agents, who then called SDPD. According to witnesses in multiple videos caught on the scene, there were close to 30 officers that surrounded that intersection. It took less than 15 minutes from the moment officers arrived on the scene for three officers, William Carter Torres, Michael Martinez, and Samuel Rodriguez, to kill Raul Rivera. Officers shot Raul over 20 times and continued to shoot him after he had fallen to the ground, and then handcuffed his unmoving body. It took about 15 to 20 minutes for paramedics to arrive. Upon arrival, he was already deceased. He remained in that street dead for 12 hours until the next morning. From beginning to end, Raul's humanity was never seen by officers. He was completely dehumanized. Raul has always suffered from mental health and needed psychological treatment so that he can heal from his wounds and trauma, not to be executed in the, in the street. What happened to Raul is not an isolated act of violence, but rather a systemic act of violence that overwhelmingly impacts people of color and other underrepresented communities. As we can see with other citizens killed in San Diego by police, like Alfreda Lango, like Sergio Wake, like Jonathan Cornell, like James Lacy, and many others who are black and brown, who did not have a gun and did not hurt anyone. All black and brown people simply existing, all riddled with bullets. I, like the many of other community members in this room, are here to say that our underrepresented communities are not disposable. Let us live. AB 392 is a necessary procedure to stop unnecessary killings that normalize structural violence towards communities of color. A vote against AB 392 says that San Diego City Council do not believe that black and brown people are worthy existing. So my question to all of you is, how much do you value black and brown lives? Will you let us live?
Maria Salery. Maria Salery, you'll have one minute. You'll be followed by Ismailan Abdallah, followed by Sharon Laros.
Hello, my name is Maria Salery. I'm a daughter, student, teacher, community member, and a loved one to someone who lost a family member at the hands of three San Diego police officers, as you just heard. If that didn't give you chills, then I don't know what to tell you. Nobody deserves to grieve the loss of such a brutal murder. Nobody deserves to grieve the loss that was preventable, and nobody deserves to grieve a loss that continues to be ignored. I teach both at UCSD and San Diego City College, mostly brown and black youth. I know I look very young, but this is who is teaching your children. When they don't show up to class, I worry about them. I do, and I tell them that I worry about them. Often, I laugh in class, because when I teach them about historical moments that passed in the 1970s and the 1980s, 18- and 19-year-old college kids think that that's just ages ago. So imagine to tell them about a law that hasn't changed since the 19th century. That's just not, not okay. We demand that you support AB 392. It's just the right thing to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ismailan Abdallah is our next speaker, followed by Sharon Laros, followed by Mohammed Abdul Lahy. And Ismailan has time seated by Sihan Said Mukinor, Sumaya Mohammed Ruwaya Mohammed, Nima Sharif, Amaran Mohammed Huda Ahmed, Sudus Mohammed Satia Mohammed Suad Abdi, Amal Mohammed Sehan Nur Juwari Mohammed, and Sihan Ismail. I'll put 15 minutes on the clock. You'll manage your time.
Thank you so much. So beautiful to hear all those names being mentioned. Good afternoon. That's right. I would like to, I would like to take the moment to greet everyone, Honorable Council President and esteemed council members. My name is Ismailan Abdallah. I'm the executive director of MassPace, the Muslim American Society Public Affairs and Civic Engagement. And we are here to lead with our values and continue to build people power in the Muslim community, and make sure that our voices are being heard in policies that are impacting our lives and the lives of our community. We stand in front of you today to ask you, as your constituents, to support AB 392. While I'm sure, and hopefully, the votes will follow the right way, because it's the moral thing to do, I want us to be conscious of the words that each and every single one of us will be using, especially for our council members who will be voting. Because the message that we send today with our votes, and also the words that will be used, will impact communities that have been faced with the trauma of dealing with police brutality for far too long. And I want all of us here to take a collective breath together. It's a breath that connects us and reaffirms our collective humanity, because you see, though we all breathe the same and we bleed the same color, the shade and color of our skin determines a different outcome when encountering with law enforcement, for the most part.
Enough is enough, not one more.
AB 392 is about saving lives and holding law enforcement to a higher standard when it comes to using lethal force only when necessary.
Enough is enough, not one more.
Because we are tired of grieving for the loss of our brothers and sisters at the hands of unnecessary use of force and racism that's oftentimes masked as law and order.
Enough is enough, not one more.
And we're also tired of sending our youth and the children out to the world and them not coming back to us, because those who are meant to protect and serve, for the most part, can also just as easily seal their death.
Enough is enough, not one more.
We are tired of mental health emergencies in communities of color translating to painful experiences and traumatic outcomes.
Enough is enough, not one more.
We are tired of our hearts bleeding and our souls are shaking, our communities grieving, and institutionalized racism tearing families apart with every beating. Death, acquitted verdict that sees, that seals justice for no one but white supremacy.
Enough is enough, not one more.
So, I urge all of us, as we took a collective breath together earlier, to take it again, knowing what that breath represents, and do, and do the right thing. And thank you so much for the bravery for our councilmember, Montgomery, and for all of those who will be signing with community. Because those who are closest to the pain are closest to the solution. We know that. We feel that. We believe that. I have beloved ones in law enforcement. This is not about good cops, it's about the institution in essence. Enough is enough, not one more. Let us live. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Laros.
Police officers should never take a human life when there are other alternatives. Law enforcement agencies must adopt and use tactics to de-escalate tense situations and calm aggressive behaviors. This will save lives and improves officer safety.
My name is Sihan Ismail, and me and my group of people urge the San Diego City Council to stand with the community. Stand with the people that you represent by passing this resolution in support of AB 392.
Sharon, you'll have one minute. You'll be followed by Mohammed Abdulani, followed by Gloria Cooper, followed by Chelsea Brigus Dotier. Go ahead, you'll have one minute.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Sharon Larios, founder and director of Turnaround Youth Foundation. We are a nonprofit organization in Linda Vista, founded and created by me. Scott Sherman, I am here to urge you to vote in support of AB 392. It is a matter that does affect your community of Linda Vista, as you've heard people from other communities as well. It does affect Linda Vista. We are one out of 12. We have one out of the 12 gang injunctions implemented in the county of San Diego. That affects a lot of our youth, a lot of gang members, which are no longer currently active gang members in Linda Vista. I do urge you, as our brother Khalid had mentioned, that when he was in Syria, that it is the norm out there for law enforcement to act unjustly to their people. We send our military out there. We send our troops to war to fight against that. This is a war that we are fighting here, that we currently have here. I'm holding you accountable, Scott. Please vote yes.
Thank you. Mohammed Abdulahi is our next speaker. He'll be followed by Gloria Cooper, who'll be followed by Chelsea Brigus Dotier. Go ahead, you'll have a minute, sir.
These stories that you continue to hear in the public testimony are inextricably linked throughout the span of our history. And they tell the story of how our bodies have been dehumanized, policed, and traumatized. According to the American Psychological Association study, in our country, black kids are widely dehumanized and perceived as older. And the New York Times quantifies this as people in our society overestimating the ages of black children by four and a half years. I just turned 16. That means when you look at me, you might not think that I'm my age. That's something that's been quantified by research. So can we stop having a debate about whether or not this reality is real? Because it's quantified by evidence and our experiences. But continuing, our current standard of force by the Supreme Court says that if a reasonable officer would act the same, then that act is justified. What defines a reasonable officer? Are the majority of people, and by extension, the majority of officers, reasonable? For the false narrative that black boys are seen as men, and that black men are to be seen as threats. Councilmembers Sherman, Kersey, and Kate, as both former and current Republicans, your party claims to stand for life. How can you stand for life if you don't support this change to the standard of force, which doesn't value my life?
One last sentence, please.
All of you took an oath to defend the Constitution. Under our status quo, that isn't our reality. And I want you to vote to change the standard of force so those rights are afforded to all of our citizens. Thank you.
Gloria Cooper. Gloria Cooper, followed by Chelsea Brigus Dotier, followed by Pedro Rios. Go ahead, ma'am, you'll have a minute.
Good afternoon to my councilmember, Monica Montgomery, and to all the councilmembers. My name is Gloria Cooper, and I'm a member of the Greater Antioch Church of God in Christ and a board member of the San Diego Organizing Project. Genesis 4:9 says, "God asked Cain, 'Where is your brother Abel?'" Cain answered, "Am I my brother's keeper?" Today, I ask the police officers, "Are you your brother's keeper?" The answer should be, "Yes, you signed up to protect and serve." As a mother, I pray that my son will make it back home. He was stopped at Euclid Imperial and told that he fit the description of someone who had just committed a robbery. With a gun to his head, they had a call, came over the radio, and they put their guns away and left him there trembling and shaking. Dr. Weber's bill, AB 395, will give officers the training they need to de-escalate the situation. Councilmembers, I ask you today, are you your brother's keeper? I say yes, because that's what you signed up for. I ask you to vote yes on AB 392. God bless you.
Thank you. Pedro Rios.
Honorable councilmembers, my name is Pedro Rios. I am the director of the American Friends Service Committee in San Diego, and also, today, I'm representing the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium, which is a coalition of over 50 faith, labor, and community organizations that work in support of migrants and refugee communities here in San Diego. I'd also like to thank Dr. Weber for bringing this bill forward. This is a bill that's necessary, essentially, to save lives, because it will restrict when police can use deadly force. It will require de-escalation whenever possible, and it will hold officers accountable for using unnecessary deadly force. The issue of accountability, of transparency, is something that's of great importance to me. Recently, I had a conversation with Chief Nisland about a use-of-force event that took place at Chicano Park. In the conversation, he mentioned that he was not happy with an email that I requested that, a meeting with him, that I had CC'd Councilmember Moreno. So when we're talking about issues of transparency and accountability, they need to be addressed. AB 392 is a step in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you. In addition, Benjamin Prado, Kathleen O'Toole, Michael McConnell, DeForest R. Hancock, Becca Taylor, and Daniel Shook all submitted speaker substantive favor, but did not wish to speak. That concludes the public testimony on this item.
Thank you, thank you all. So we're going to start with councilmember comments and questions, starting with Councilmember Montgomery.
Okay, thank y'all.
Please, if you can just quiet down. Thank you so much. Councilmember Montgomery.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for being here and speaking from your own experience, from your heart. For the first time in a long time, because of Dr. Weber's leadership, we can now divert our experience and our perspective into actual policy. And that is what, really, that's what this change is reflective of. That's what this resolution is reflective of. I, although I know many of your stories, I sat here almost in tears because not only do I have two nephews, but I also, upon coming into this position, I knew the stance that I was going to take. And I had to talk to, I don't have children, but I had to talk to my staff. I had to talk to my staff about the way people might view them, based on some of the stances that we would have to take. And many of your stories brought... And many of your stories brought that to my remembrance because it is a sacrifice. It's a welcomed sacrifice, but it is a sacrifice because we are still having the conversation that if we change policy to make people safer, that we are against police. And that is not the case. That is not the case. And I, above all things while I am here, above any policy that I want to change, that is the conversation that I really want to change, that we can have a reasonable conversation about use of force, we can have a reasonable conversation about transparency and accountability without it being antagonistic. That is my goal. So I appreciate you all being here. I really urge, I'm urging my colleagues to support this. The last thing I'll say is something that I said Saturday evening at the Roosevelt Dinner. We had a keynote speaker that poured her heart out to us. She said, she talked about losing her father, her brother, and her son to gun violence. And now she's a representative in Pennsylvania, I believe. And my concern was that we would stand up and we would clap for her and we would say, "I understand, and I'm with you." And we would turn around and not do what we were called to do in these positions, which is to change policy to make people safer. That was my concern. And I was very clear about saying that she was not for our entertainment. She's not for our entertainment, she's for change. And so I say to my colleagues today, everyone that spoke, no matter where you land, everyone that spoke, they're not here for our entertainment. They're not here to pour out their pain for us to turn around and not do the right thing. So I am, I'm happy to hopefully make a stand as a city on a statewide issue. You know, we pay for lobbyists that are at the state and federal level. We are involved in many ways, state and federal issues. It shouldn't change when it comes to things like this. And so I am moving that this body approve the resolution in support of Assembly Bill 392 authored by our very own Dr. Weber, just with the following changes of paragraph number five, that instead of the words, well, I'll just read it. Whereas according to the California Department of Justice in 2017, the last full year for which statistics are available, use of force by California police officers led to the deaths of 172 people, half of whom were, half of whom did not have a gun. So I want to strike out the two words, were unarmed, and add did not have a gun because there's a distinction there. Thank you.
Thank you for that motion with the clarifications. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who came today and who spoke and just who came to be supportive. I really appreciate you coming out. I've studied this bill deeply, AB 392, and I understand that amendments still may be made to it because the police officers, representatives, and Assemblymember Weber and her staff are still working on this bill, and it's not quite in its final form yet. As a physician, I'm concerned for the safety of the police officers and the citizens. The statistics surrounding the use of deadly force are very troubling. Most of those killed are of color, and many are disabled. Our standard needs to be updated to the definition of necessary that Assemblymember Weber has in this bill. I have read it over and over again, and it makes common sense as well as legal sense, and it protects the police officers as well as the citizens. As one who marched with Dr. Martin Luther King, I always remember him saying, "Let us be judged by the content of our characters and not by the color of our skin." This applies to all of us, no matter what our color, no matter what our background. Let us be of strong character. When he was murdered, I cried for three days. I promised I would never stand quietly again in the face of injustice, and I never have. I would like to second this motion. I want to tell you that cities that have already done, changed the wording to necessary as we have in this bill, cities such as Philadelphia have seen a 67% decrease in police shootings. That's in Philadelphia. Every jurisdiction that has changed to the necessary standard has had a decrease in officer-involved shootings and a decrease in officers injured. This bill may not be 100% what is needed at this time, but there's room for negotiation and compromise. But it is clear that something must be done to fix this problem. Not only do we need to continue to explore our biases, and each one of us in our hearts must do this, we must all love each other, we are all brothers and sisters. We must increase the de-escalation training for our police officers, and we need to also train them to recognize medical situations so that they don't mistake them for dangerous situations. I will be supporting this resolution fully today, and I thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Ward.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came out here today, who has talked to me out in the community about your thoughts on this matter. It is clearly so important, as evident by the presence here and the conversations leading up to today. This is literally a life and death issue for community members and for officers, and as a city, we have a very clear stake in what happens. It's also a goal that in principle, we should all be easily able to agree on a foundation that nobody should be shot unless it's absolutely necessary. That should be common ground to start from. And as so many things when debating policy, we get complicated, but we know we have to do better. Being a police officer is an exceptionally difficult job, and in many cases, we ask more than we should. But it has to be a hard job. The expectations and standards have to be as high as possible because the stakes are so high. I hear the pressures that our officers are under constantly to keep us safe, to keep themselves safe. I hear the pressures of having to assess and respond effectively to those who are experiencing a mental health crisis, which could become dangerous. I hear the pressure that too many everyday citizens carry with the weight and the fear that holding a cellphone or a pen or keys at the wrong time and the wrong light and the wrong place could be a deadly mistake. What is that? We don't have the best justice possible until we address all of these pressures as best as we can. And I don't believe that some of these incidents are out of malice, but I believe that the data is real, and I believe that the realities and the perceptions in the community are legitimate. And I believe that all of this should guide us to a policy that helps to prevent avoidable deaths. And I know that many of our San Diego police officers care. They take pride in their profession. They respect and trust each other, and they want to have that trust with community. Unfortunately, we don't have to invent something revolutionary here. We have experience to draw from. As you heard, jurisdictions across the country have moved beyond the minimum standard established by the Supreme Court. And whether it's states like Illinois, New York, Connecticut, cities like Philadelphia, San Francisco, Stockton, Seattle, we know similar changes work. And we've seen in all those cases, a measurable change in reduced officer-involved shootings, increased public safety, stronger public confidence in law enforcement, continued interest in recruits, and improved officer safety. And those aren't small jurisdictions, and if those are consistent outcomes, why wouldn't we want that for California and for San Diego? It's important that AB 392 still maintains the standard that an objectively reasonable officer with the same information available in the moment would find no reasonable alternative. We're not bringing in outside perspectives or using hindsight. No reasonable alternative is a standard that we should want to make work. And I'm glad that the efforts in the Capitol have moved to link this potential change with additional training to support the transition. And if that happens, it will be up to this council and the PD to also make sure the right support is in place. That's critical. The fundamental goal is something that I think that we all can and should share. It's proven to yield positive change, to not put officers at risk, and it's right. I will support this today.
Council President Proton Bree.
Yes, first of all, thank you all for coming out today. It's been really beautiful to see so many residents from all over the city coming together. And I was very moved by the stories many of you shared about your personal experiences and, you know, I can only imagine, I can't imagine what you, what some members of our community feel every day when they're just trying to go about the ordinaries of living, of going to the store, of going to the school, of going to visit a relative. First of all, I respect all that our police officers do every day. They have a really hard job, and our shared goal is a safe city, a safe community. And building trust between the community and our police officers is an important step in ensuring a safe community. As I reviewed the data from other cities, I believe AB 392 is a step in the right direction. So I will be supporting the resolution today. I'm particularly pleased that the legislation includes funding for training, which is essential. Too often, we ask, you know, many, our police officers and many other agencies to do something without giving them the resources they need. This has been a very hard day, I'm sure, for many of you to come and share with us really personal things about your lives. Please know that many of us on the council want to work with you to ensure that all of us feel safe in our communities. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you all for coming down today. And I also want to thank the men and women of our police force for the job they do on a daily basis. It's a very difficult job, and I want to thank Councilmember Montgomery for her words of talking about how to bring everybody together and talk about this and be a constructive forum for change, but in a non-antagonistic way. Because when we're antagonistic towards each other, the hair goes up on the back of our necks, we stand in opposite corners, and we don't trust each other, and from there you can never get to a point of where you can actually make reasonable change. With that being said, what happens after this passes with the resolution that's put before us today? Where does it go? What happens? What's the process? Anybody?
I think, and I would defer to Ms. Lawrence for this. I believe that there is, the resolution is packed up kind of by our lobbyists, and it goes to the governor's desk to show support from the City of San Diego for this resolution. I believe that Oakland also went through the same process sometime last week, and so will be, if it passes, will be an official supporter, and that's kind of how it will work.
Patrick Buteller is here from Government Affairs. He could speak to the next steps.
Thank you.
Hi, Patrick Buteller, Director of Government Affairs. If this resolution goes through the entire process and is approved, we would take an official city support position and deliver letters to the author's office as well as the relevant committees as the bill moves forward.
And then does that get tallied up? Does that get thrown in the yay column, and then other letters get thrown in the nay column? How does that work?
It depends. The author can use it for what their office would like to, as well as the committee staffers usually put who the supporters and opposition is in their committee analysis. So we would be listed under the supporters.
But I mean, it really has no official bearing on the vote at the state other than saying, hey, some people in San Diego said they wanted to support this.
People will see that the City of San Diego voted to support the bill, and so, as they're making--
That may sway their opinion one way or the other.
That may sway their opinion one way or another, yes.
And I need to be clear with people, thank you. I need to be clear with people, in the six and a half years that I've been here, that we have these non-binding resolutions, and Councilmember Montgomery and I talked about this, we have nine non-binding resolutions that come forward to support any state or federal issue that may be the issue of the day. To me, I don't know why we get involved with non-binding resolutions when at the end of the day, it really can't make a difference other than maybe a popularity contest of saying how many people support and how many people don't.
Please, the audience, please, the audience, you had your time. Please allow Councilmember Sherman to finish this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. And you can look back at my six and a half year history. I don't vote for resolutions. Never have. I just don't. So I can't be inconsistent today. There's been resolutions that I've supported in my heart, there've been resolutions that I've disagreed with in my heart. But at the end of the day, it's a non-binding resolution that really doesn't have a lot of effect and probably usually ends up in a circular file somewhere underneath a bureaucrat's desk. So I need to make sure that I am consistent with what I do, so I'm going to reluctantly have to vote no today.
Thank you, thank you. We're almost getting close to the vote, so thank you so much for bearing with us. I don't see any other of my colleagues on the lights. I first of all want to acknowledge Assemblywoman Shirley Weber for being here and making time to be present and speak on the bill. I know that you're extremely busy getting things done at the state level, so thank you for being here and for the work that you're doing in behalf of San Diego. I'm not going to say much more because I think we're all waiting to cast our votes, but I do appreciate the work that is intended with this particular bill, which is about accountability, transparency, and updating processes that were created a while back, 2019, we're talking about 1872. And I know that the city has updated its processes, but other cities have not, so this is the right thing to do for California. And as a big city that we are, that is part of California, I do think that by the city having a stance on this particular bill matters, specifically when we actually allocate a significant amount of general funds to hire lobbyists to do work in behalf of the city at the state level and at the federal level. So this hopefully will give some direction to our lobbyists to represent the city's voice at the state level. So Assemblywoman Weber, you have my full support for this bill and whatever you need. So thank you so much. So with that, with that, please cast your vote. Clerk, please call the roll.
And that passes 6 to 2 with Councilmember Kersey and Councilmember Sherman voting no, and Councilmember Kate absent.